The role.
I'm here.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Here.
Thank you. Counselor Hassan?
Here.
Council President Kimmy?
Here.
Counselor Teeter?
Here.
Counselor Tivnan?
Here.
And Mayor Beatty is absent.
Thank you. We will begin tonight's agenda, starting with visitor comments. We will then move to our proclamation, the city manager's report, consent agenda, one public hearing, three first reading ordinances, two work sessions, and council new business. Regarding visitor comments, the city requires pre-registration for online and in-person visitor comments at council meetings. Registration closed at 12 noon today. All registration was conducted through the city recorder's office via email or phone in preparation for this meeting. There is one person registered to comment at tonight's meeting. As a reminder, visitor comments provide the opportunity for the community to speak about matters, even if they are not on the agenda. Visitor comments are limited to three minutes for each person. Visitors may state their comments and should not expect the council to engage in back-and-forth dialogue regarding the comments. As this is a time for the council to hear from the community, if follow-up is needed, our city manager and city recorder are taking notes. We have one person, Elijah Cooper. Mister Elijah Cooper? Going once, twice. Not here. Is there anyone registered to make public comment?
Elijah was the only person that had registered.
Okay. Thank you. Next, we have two proclamations to read. Counselor Duggar, will you please read the first proclamation?
Sure. Thanks, Council President. This is from the Office of the Mayor. Whereas this month marks the 96th anniversary of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s birth, and whereas Dr. King dedicated his life to advancing equality and social justice and challenged all Americans to participate in the never-ending work to build a more perfect union, and whereas Dr. King taught us that we are measured not by where we stand in moments of comfort and convenience, but by the stands we take during times of challenging controversy. And whereas the events of the past year presented our community with no shortage of challenges, and whereas there is a racial divide in our country, we must, we must work to bridge in order to help heal the wounds created by structural racism, both historical and current, and whereas Dr. King's teachings continue to guide and inspire us in addressing the challenges, and whereas Martin Luther King Jr. Day is observed each year on the third Monday in January and is the only federal holiday designated as a national day of service. And whereas each of us can and must contribute to making our communities better with increased opportunity for the whole community, now therefore I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do hereby proclaim January 20th, 2025, as Martin Luther King Jr. Day in the City of Beaverton, and encourage all residents to reflect on Dr. King's teachings and seek to put them into action through service to our community.
Thank you. I'll read the next one. It's the proclamation, Office of the Mayor, City of Beaverton. Whereas 121 years ago, on January 13, 1903, 102 Korean immigrants arrived in Honolulu, Hawaii on the SS Gallic to become the first members of what is now a community of approximately 2 million in the United States. And whereas these Korean immigrants came in search of a better life, they were honorable members of their community, working hard and raising their families. And today, our community benefits from the contributions made by Korean-American community, members to businesses, religious groups, academic communities, and neighborhoods in which they reside. And whereas contributions by Korean-Americans include the first successful operation for coronary artery disease, the development of the nectarine, numerous Olympic champions, as well as countless achievements in academics, the arts, the entertainment industry, government, journalism, and medicine. And whereas the Korean community in Beaverton has grown substantially over the years, contributing to the growing diversity of our city. And whereas Korean-Americans play a crucial role in the strength and vitality of the relationship between Korea and the United States, thus fostering peace, stability, and strengthening economic relationships in the Asia-Pacific region and throughout our global economy. Now therefore I, Lacy Beatty, Mayor of the City of Beaverton, do now proclaim January 13, 2025, as Korean-American Day in the City of Beaverton, and urge the residents of our community to join in this observance. Go out and present this to the community and take a picture.
Yeah.
Y'all look fabulous.
Look right here. One, two, three. As well. One, two, three, and one. I'd like to say some words.
Good evening. Beaverton City Councilors and everyone here today. My name is Francesca Kim. On behalf of Korean community in Beaverton, Korean-American community in Beaverton, I'm deeply honored to receive the proclamation recognizing Korean-American Day. This day is not just for celebration of our history. I believe this reminder of the enduring, that the contributions and spirit of Korean-American community. I'm very grateful for this acknowledgement and remain committed to the forcing that our, the effort and the spirit of all our Korean community. I came to the United States in 1985 and many learning process, starting with the foreign language and unfamiliar the culture. Forty years later, I'm still learning any many, many, many of difficulties and unfamiliar stuff. And still, many things are still not easy and difficult. But I'm here, home in Beaverton. My children and my grandchildren don't feel like uncomfortable as awkward as I feel. And I am at home here. And thank you, the City of Beaverton, for standing together and helping us together, us to moving forward and to stay strong and more inclusive community. 감사합니다. 감사합니다.
Next item on the agenda is the city manager's report. City manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Council President. We'll wait for the slide deck to get up. I have six announcements for you this evening. And I'm aware you have a long evening ahead of you, so I will be brief. The first slide, if we can advance, is just a reminder that, of course, it's this time of year to protect your pipes. And so we want to encourage residents to go online and check out some of the cold weather online tips that we have at beavertonoregon.gov/water. And the next slide is actually a special slide, and I'll tell you for a couple of reasons. One, we definitely want to invite everyone to get inspired by all of our art happenings. But what's really unique about this slide, which is an arts map that reflects all the locations and public art in the city, is that this was a recent insert in Your City, the updated magazine that we issue to residents. And it's now being used as a potential school tour by one of our schools in Beaverton School District, which is really exciting. And the other piece is, is that we have another school that is using the city award-winning budget video to educate the kids on how cities are run and funded. So we're really excited that Your City was able to, one, capture our arts map and encourage and inspire some of our local teachers. Next slide. We just want to remind you, the city is coming up. It's on March 17. We have a reception at 6:00, and we have the event that begins at 7:00. The tickets are free, so that you can go to thereser.org and pick up your tickets now. Next slide. We have a Neighborhood Association, NAC program, open house. It is on Thursday, January 30, from 6:00 to 8:00 at City Hall. And for those of you that are not familiar, watching in this evening with what NACs are, Beaverton's divided up into 11 officially recognized neighborhoods. And these are called Neighborhood Association Committees. And they are all reflective of volunteers in your community and your respective neighbors. So if you do not know which one of the 11 that you belong to, we want to encourage you to go to beavertonoregon.gov/NAC, or NAC, and find out which one you are part of. Join us at the open house and find out a way to get involved to meet your neighbors. Next slide. One Book One Beaverton is in full swing during the month of January. We want to invite you to attend a lot of the events that we have related to this at the library. But most importantly, on Saturday, February 15, we are pleased to present an evening with featured author Diane Wilson, Wilson, excuse me, who wrote The Seed Keeper. And you can check that out at the Patricia Research Center for the Arts. And again, beavertonlibrary.org is where you can find the information. And then last, we have the city's new e-newsletter that's coming out in January. So you can get the latest and greatest on top of Your City, but through a monthly e-newsletter. So you can sign up at beavertonoregon.gov. So we're very excited about this. So we may just have something special to figure out what we're going to name it. So stay tuned for more. And then last, I just wanted to remind the community that we opened the Inclimate Weather Shelter over the holiday weekend. It was open on Saturday and closed today at noon. And just to let you know, we had approximately between, on any given day, between 20 and 35 individuals that we were able to provide shelter for. So I want to thank our homeless manager, the county, and the shelter providers for their partnership over the weekend. They did a great job, and everyone was safe and warm. So thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you. All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
I'll second.
It was moved by Counselor Teeter, seconded by Counselor Duggar. Any discussion? Seeing no comment. City recorder, please take the vote by roll call.
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeier-Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Council President Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tivnan?
Yes.
Six, zero.
Thank you. We will now move on to the public hearings portion of tonight's meeting. This is the time and place for a public hearing considering a citywide solid waste drop box franchise application. Thank you. I now call to order the public hearing. Before we move to the substance of the hearing, I will ask the city attorney to cover some preliminary matters.
Thank you, Counselor Kimmy. There are three preliminary matters to address before moving to the substance of tonight's hearing. First, the burden of proof. Second, disclosures. And finally, the procedure for the hearing. First, the applicant has a burden of proving that the application best balances the criteria identified in Beaverton Code's subsections 4.08.100, sub-C, and sub-F. Testimony and evidence must be directed towards these criteria or other criteria that the speaker believes apply to the application. Issues will not be preserved in the record unless the issue is raised and accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the city council and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue during the hearing. Second, moving to disclosures. Do any council members wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest this evening? Let the record show there are none. Do any council members have an ex parte disclosure to report?
Yes, I've run into and talked with several of our current haulers and had emails from our haulers and from the applicant reach out, asking to talk about this hearing. But in each case, I've said, send a comment to us to be part of the public record, and we can talk more after the hearing is done.
I have also had folks reach out, but have not responded to any of the requests.
I guess in that case, I have also had people reach out that have not responded or engaged in any way with them.
And I did have people reach out and got emails and had one request to speak, and I did speak to that individual.
Did you learn anything of substance that is not in the record?
No.
Okay.
So I did get email, but I did not respond.
Okay. Moving on, do any members of the audience wish to challenge the ability of the council to consider this matter, or challenge the ability of any member of the council to participate in the decision?
Sorry, city attorney, I had my name in the chat to just echo my fellow counselors. So my disclosure is the same as Counselor Tivnan's.
Okay. In that case, I see no responses, so let the record show there are none. No challenges. Okay. Finally, I'll cover the procedure for the hearing this evening. First, city staff will present the staff report. Second, the applicant will present for up to 15 minutes. Then, any proponent will have an opportunity to speak for up to three minutes as set by the presiding officer, Counselor Kimmy. Next, opponents may present their case. First, a recognized Neighborhood Association, special organization formed for the purpose of opposition, or other group represented by a spokesperson, will have 10 minutes to speak. Then, individual opponents will have up to three minutes to speak, as determined by Counselor Kimmy. Finally, the applicant will have five minutes for rebuttal. Rebuttal testimony shall be limited to testimony and evidence in the record. And then, if the applicant introduces new information during their rebuttal, an opponent will have up to five minutes to rebut the rebuttal. Anyone wishing to speak at this hearing should follow the instructions included on tonight's agenda. That concludes the preliminary legal matters.
Thank you. Let's proceed to the staff presentation.
Good evening, members of the city council. For the record, I am Scott Keller, Senior Program Manager. And with me tonight is Recycling Program Coordinator Elizabeth Cole. Both of us from the Sustainability and Recycling Division. We are here tonight for a public hearing for the council to consider an application for a solid waste franchise from Thunderbird Dropbox. The applicant cites several reasons for applying for a Dropbox franchise that are noted in the application, including increased recycling and cost savings for ratepayers. These would be achieved by Thunderbird's use of Greenway Recycling, a dry waste processing facility owned by Thunderbird's owner, which has a higher recycling and recovery rate and lower fees than similar facilities around the region. However, we note that the franchise application under consideration is from Thunderbird Dropbox, as the city does not regulate processor or disposal facilities. They also intend to ensure high standards of customer service, and equity goals would be advanced as a state of Oregon certified minority-owned business. For some background, Beaverton's solid waste franchise seeks to achieve several goals, including reducing traffic with a designated provider in specific service areas, reduced environmental impact, fewer collection trucks to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and minimize wear and tear on the city streets, regulatory oversight through Beaverton Code and our administrative rules, a standardized rate structure across the city, no matter who the franchisee is, and the system provides consistent and cost-effective service by service providers. Similar to other utility services such as water, electricity, and natural gas, it is not a competitive free market. There are currently five solid waste franchises operating in Beaverton, each of whom has a specific geographic area to work. The current franchise term ends in May of 2032. The most recent year for which we have full data is 2023, and there were 85,000 tons of material collected from all Beaverton's sectors of solid waste collection that year. Of that, about 19% of the material was collected out of drop boxes, of which about 3/4 of it came from commercial side accounts, and 1/4 came from residential accounts. The city regulates the delivery fee and a hall fee for Dropbox service, but the processing fees on the type of material and which processor or disposal facility is used is not regulated by the city. They are regulated, they are permitted by Metro, but Metro does not regulate their rates. The five companies who currently have a solid waste franchise in the community operate in an area in which only one franchisee provides service. However, the code provides for a non-exclusive franchise in which one or more franchises could be granted if an additional need or service is demonstrated. This brings us to two interrelated questions to help analyze the application and whether Beaverton Code requirements are met. Does the application demonstrate a need for additional service in the service areas identified? And can the current franchise holders provide the additional service? Evaluating the determination of need focuses on council balancing seven objectives and seven criteria outlined in code. Staff review of the seven objectives in code 4.08.100.C indicates that two of the objectives are fully met, two are partially met, and three are not met. The objectives that are met involve recycling and resource recovery and providing service appropriate to the public interest. Partially met objectives include ensuring safe, efficient, and economical service. The comprehensive aspect of that objective is not met since the applicant is seeking to provide only Dropbox service. The code mentions Dropbox franchise three times, but also suggests franchises will include single-family, multifamily, and commercial customers in their respective geographic areas. Three objectives were not met regarding areas of marginal return, reasonable profit and investment, and cooperation with other governmental bodies. In addition to those objectives, 4.08.100.F identifies seven evaluative criteria that the council may consider. Five of these criteria are not relevant to this application, relating to increased population, extension of the city limits, intensive development, changes in collection technology, and changes in federal or state law. The analysis of number five suggests granting an additional franchise would negatively impact the current franchisees. And number six notes that Dropbox service is currently available in all franchise areas. Staff analysis, therefore, of these seven objectives and seven criteria were the basis to answer the two questions. Does the application demonstrate a need for additional service in the service areas provided? No. Based on the answers guiding staff review identified in the code, the application does not demonstrate a need for an additional citywide franchise to be granted. And second, can the current franchise holders provide the additional service? Yes, the franchisees are currently providing Dropbox services in all areas of the community. Based on these two questions and the criteria that we reviewed in the staff report, staff recommends denial of the application, as is fully explained in the report. We're happy to answer any questions you may have, or you can move on to the next portion of the hearing.
Are there any questions to the staff? Counselor Duggar?
Are we aware of if Thunderbird operates in any cities around us? Or are we their first application?
They operate in the city of Portland.
They do operate in the city of Portland.
And I believe also the city of Gresham.
And Gresham. So no immediate in Washington County?
Correct.
And I did not have a chance to review, like, their application from the city of Portland. Do they, generally speaking, does Portland have similar criteria to us as far as their additional, non, what is it, non-regul, yeah?
Yeah. Portland has a franchise system for its residential customers, but has a different set of regulations for commercial and Dropbox that is pretty different than Beaverton's. Gresham has a franchise for their residential service and their commercial service, but a separate system for Dropbox collection.
Okay, so apples to oranges compared to, compared to us. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Tivnan?
Can you, can you describe any complaints that the city has received from individuals regarding service around Dropbox requests throughout the city?
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Tivnan, for the question. And we did review, we record all of the incoming emails and phone calls we get to the city. We did review, and there were over 500 for last year with a handful of complaints, two of which were Dropbox-related. And I think that, now I don't know if we have the detail. I think they are customer service-related, but I'd have to go back and double-check. But two of 500 some odd calls were Dropbox-related that we received at the city for last year. That doesn't account for what the haulers may have received.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Teeter?
Here I am. Okay. So since Thunderbird is the applicant and not Greenway, and we, the city cannot, does not review processors and disposal, we are only considering Thunderbird as the applicant here tonight. Is that correct? We can't consider anything else? We're not considering anything else?
That is the staff's understanding that we are focused on the applicant, which is Thunderbird Recycling.
Thank you.
Oh, yeah, Thunderbird Dropbox.
Counselor Hassan?
Yeah, very quick. Scott, you gave some stats about Portland and Gresham. Could you say those one more time, so I can just remember it and hear it one more time?
Yes. The city of Portland has a franchise system for their residential sector, similar to Beaverton. But they do not have a similar system for commercial or Dropbox accounts. They do a separate licensing system that is not like a franchise. The city of Gresham has a franchise for their residential and commercial service, but has a separate permitting licensing system for their Dropbox accounts. Is that what you were asking about?
Yeah, I just wanted to hear that one more time. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you. All right. Now it's time for the applicant's presentation. Applicant, you have 15 minutes to present.
Here we go. Members of the city council, good evening, and thank you for meeting with us. My name is Jax Garrett, and this is my dad, Terrell. Together, we own Thunderbird Dropbox. The question tonight is simple. Is the service offered by the current franchisees the best available for the public, or is there a need for improvement? We believe there is a higher level of service which can be provided, and we are prepared to do so. Your time is important, and rather than providing public testimony, we have submitted letters from four neighborhood associations, two homeowners' associations, four construction industry associations, the Oregon Association of industry associations, the Oregon Association of Minority Entrepreneurs, which we are members of, and a petition with over 450 signatures from interested stakeholders of Beaverton, all with one common theme: There is need for choice, improved service, lower disposal rates, and higher recycling rates in Beaverton. While the code significantly limits staff in their analysis, it specifically grants you the discretion to consider the additional goals, objectives, and criteria that we present tonight. Next slide, please. Many years ago, outside of Beaverton, two very small franchises were awarded to minorities. But due to lack of size, they ultimately could not maintain economic viability. Next slide, please. Over the last 30 years, Beaverton's minority population has grown from 12% to 41%, and with additional underrepresented populations is now a kaleidoscope culture. As minorities, our participation in Beaverton's solid waste system continues to be limited to positions with no chance of equity, ownership, or familial wealth building, and we are completely denied access to the city's solid waste contracting. Next slide, please. This is despite the city's strong MWESB purchasing policy, and your letter of December 12, 2023 that said, "We do this by implementing policies that actively dismantle systemic barriers and promote equity. It is time to remove these barriers."
Before moving on, I ask your patience while I provide corrections to certain sections of the staff report. It says we only partially met objective number one, believing the code does not contemplate a limited service franchise holder. Excuse me. Actually, the code does differentiate drop boxes in three separate locations. The most important location is in the non-exclusive franchise section that evaluates our application tonight. I quote, "The number of existing collection franchisees or Dropbox service franchisees as applicable, providing service in the area of the city in which the applicant wishes to provide service." The "as applicable" part is really important because it directs you to make a choice and determine which type of franchisee you are considering. If a Dropbox franchise was not contemplated, why does the code require you to make this choice? If considering the number of existing franchisees and staff statement that companies already provide physical service to all areas of Beaverton, please also consider whether they exercise their required fiduciary duties as well. Later, we will discuss how service is actually solid waste management, which comes with a fiduciary duty to the ratepayer that these companies refuse to fulfill. Refusal to provide service is no different than lack of capacity. Therefore, there is a need in the marketplace for a hauler that will fulfill these obligations. There is a minor shortfall claimed in objective number two due to concerns there may be potential for duplicative Dropbox inventory. No factual basis is given, rather only concern. With seven-day wait times for a Dropbox and trucks ordered in 2020 that have not been delivered, the concern actually should be that of an inventory shortage. Next slide, please. You'll see in the supplemental materials, there's a letter from the hauler's consultant claiming an increase in rates due to our inclusion. I have spoken numerous times with Chris Bell, who is your rate analyst, and I confirm this again this evening: If we are included, there will be no increase in rates due to our inclusion. Supporting this, we studied trip times from these five different locations to three different facilities at seven different times of the day. Next slide. The result: No appreciable difference in trip time, no increase in traffic congestion, uh, yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, and no increase in cost. Next slide. In public comment in the staff report, there have been concerns made about cherry picking. The claim is, we will come to Beaverton, take the best drop boxes, and leave the rest for the existing haulers. From the first conversation with Scott Keller until tonight, our position remains that all customers must be served equally. Quoting from our application, "Thunderbird will improve customer service for all of Beaverton's residential and business customers equally, regardless of location, quantity of business, or other factors." Also stated in the application, "We will provide service in all areas, including those of marginal return." I don't know how to make myself more clear about this commitment. Objective five and criterion five are both very similar, asking whether the existing franchise holders can make a reasonable profit on investments in modern equipment with the introduction of competition. The code itself answers this question in section four, guaranteeing the franchise holders a 9% target return on gross revenues. And it also states, I quote, "That this guarantee, excuse me, this guarantee is," I quote, "considered sufficient to allow investment in equipment and to ensure quality collection service." Additionally, our participation can increase the existing franchise holders' total profits, which I will explain later. Objective number six, cooperate with other governmental bodies by recognizing their service arrangements. I missed it. I just assumed that the fact that we're here, asking to operate within your rules, that it would be apparent our willingness to recognize the rules and service arrangements of all governmental bodies. We only operate in areas where we have necessary permissions or permits; we do not cross franchise lines. We run a clean shop, and we follow the rules, recognizing all service arrangements. With these corrections, our application satisfies objectives one, two, three, four, six, and seven with a neutral rating on objective five. Also, it satisfies criteria five and six, with staff concluding the remaining criteria is not applicable. Eight yeses, one neutral, and five not applicable equals preponderance. Next slide, please.
When staff determined the criterion of intensive development is not applicable, they were not allowed to consider the redevelopment in Beaverton that is now at hand. Next slide, please. Additional dwelling units are are the rage, and strip malls are being replaced with multi-story mixed-use development. Beginning with demolition and continuing through reconstruction, next slide, please. The need and demand for environmental responsibility ranges from energy-efficient building codes to recovery, reuse, recycling of demolition and construction waste materials. This is paramount, particularly as developers, builders, and governments seek to achieve lead ratings and environmental goals. Next slide, please. Currently, the existing franchisees choose to take collected solid waste materials almost exclusively to their own captive facilities with substandard recovery rates ranging from 20% to 22%, making the achievement of lead certifications and environmentally responsible redevelopment almost impossible. Next slide, please.
In the old days, collection consisted of picking up the garbage and taking it to the dump. It was pretty simple. Today, due to the implementation of new advances in technology, significantly higher recovery rates have changed the expectations and resulted fiduciary duties placed on the hauler. The simple collection concept is involved in solid waste management, which is the fiduciary stewardship from pickup to final disposition, assuring that all materials are handled in the most environmentally responsible and cost-conscious manner. Today, we have a national award-winning facility that combines many conveyors, machines, and people into a sophisticated demanufacturing plant, which presents superior opportunities to recycle. The code challenges you with the objective of increasing recycling and resource recovery. This is available today, and we need to take advantage of it. Next slide. A few months ago, I watched online as this council anguished over Metro's substantial price increases at their transfer stations. However, quietly in the background, Pride and Waste Management have been hauling almost all of Beaverton's dry waste to their own captive facilities with prices much higher than those at Metro and Greenway. This pattern of systematic overcharging to achieve self-enrichment at the detriment of the ratepayer has gone on for years. How can you defend $170 tip fees in a $157 world? Next slide. Perhaps the most egregious example of this is wood prices. When you force the ratepayer to pay $1,761 for wood box disposal while alternate facilities charge between $126 and $250, you leave the door wide open for regulated competition to enter the marketplace and correct this inequity. Next slide.
How many homeowners have called their Beaverton franchise hauler for a Dropbox, finally given up in frustration, then rented a pickup from Home Depot, making multiple trips to the transfer station? While one hauler does claim you can order a Dropbox online, after navigating multiple menus on the website, you are redirected to call them on the phone. We have done this, experiencing on-hold times of 15 to 28 minutes to finally find out we cannot get the box for three to seven days. Finally, when we asked for our material to go to Greenway, we were told a flat, no. If it had to go to TBWR or Forest Grove, when you don't have a choice and you do not believe it will make a difference, what is the point in filing a complaint? Beaverton franchisees provide the minimum level of service and have no incentive to improve and strive for excellence due to the lack of controlled competition. Over the last 25 years, the franchise haulers have consistently walked away from business as many frustrated contractors purchased trailers due to lack of timely Dropbox service. These trailers are now everywhere in a horribly inefficient way to haul solid waste, adding to congestion and pollution. By allowing controlled competition and choice, the haulers will have to achieve a higher level of service. This will cause many of these inefficient trailers to be parked, allowing the contractors to once again use the more efficient drop boxes. Controlled competition and choice will lead to lower disposal costs and higher recycling rates, better service, less congestion, and more hauler profits. Next slide, please.
In the past, you have been confronted with interlopers who wanted to operate outside the franchise structure and regulations. Started years ago with Woodfeathers, later AGG, most recently Ridwell. Quoting the Hillsborough News Times, "Solid waste haulers like Pride Disposal and Recycling say that they aren't opposed to competition from companies like Ridwell so long as they jump through the same regulatory hoops they have to. Our presence tonight reinforces our mission to follow the rules, do the reporting, pay the required fees, and jump through the regulatory hoops." Next slide. A big part of staff's review is whether the existing haulers are capable of providing the service. This ties back to solid waste management and the fiduciary duty to make decisions that are honest, transparent, and in line with integrity in the best interest of the ratepayer. Do the haulers have the capacity to put the ratepayer's interests first? Yes. Are they willing to do so? No. Next slide.
We could do better than disposal prices $10 to $15 above market. We can do better than 22% recovery. We can do better than 28-minute hold times and waiting seven days for delivery. We can certainly do better than a $1,700 wood box. We can do better with choice. The current franchisees refuse to provide service to the ratepayer at the lowest feasible cost and refuse to preserve the environment. Rather, they choose the path of self-enrichment through the use of their own captive facilities at the expense of the ratepayer. This behavior creates and proves the need for Thunderbird to be an integral part of your collection solid waste management system. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And any questions?
Yeah, are there any questions? I see none. Now it's time for, thank you. Now it's time for the testimony in support of the appeal. City recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak in support?
No.
No. Okay, thank you. We are now moving on to the testimony in opposition to the appeal. City recorder, is there anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Yes, that's the list of names I gave.
Okay. The testimony from those who wish to speak in opposition to the application will be taken in following order. There will be 10 minutes for any neighborhood association, special organization formed for the purpose of opposition, or any group represented by the spokesperson, and 2 minutes for any individual. Are there, are there any speakers representing a neighborhood association, special organization formed in opposition, or group represented by spokesperson?
We had down Lexi Garberino and Dave Huber for the Beaverton Waste Haulers Association.
Lexi? Okay. Please state your name, organization, address for the record. You have 10 minutes.
This one working? Okay. We'll wait for them to get our slides pulled up.
Just a moment while she pulls the PowerPoint up.
Yeah.
Good evening, Councilor Teeter. My name is Dave Huber. I am the senior manager of the waste management. And with me this evening?
Good evening. Sorry for the misunderstanding, but it's not Lexi up here speaking on behalf of the haulers. It's myself, Kristin Leichner with Pride Disposal and Recycling Company. Thank you for your time tonight, and if we could move to the next slide. We're speaking on behalf of the five franchise Beaverton haulers, which include our two companies, as well as Evergreen Disposal, Garberino Disposal, and Walker Garbage and Recycling, who are all present in the room tonight. You can see the hauler map here, which shows each company's defined boundary within Beaverton. The five franchise Beaverton haulers respectfully request that you deny Thunderbird's request to become a Beaverton Dropbox franchise holder, and tonight we will touch on several topics to help inform the decision you have before you. Next slide, please.
Beaverton's franchise system is highly regulated. Each hauler turns in detailed cost reports.
Can you speak up? Sorry, it's a little hard to hear, Dave.
Oh, is your mic on? Oh, thank you. There we go, is that better?
Much, thank you.
Okay. Beaverton's franchise system is highly regulated. Each hauler turns in detailed cost reports annually to the city with hundreds of data points detailing expenses and revenue in Beaverton. These reports allocate costs to multiple jurisdictions so one city is not subsidizing services in another city. The five reports from the five haulers are aggregated into one report for the entire city, and city staff uses that combined report to determine the rates for services in Beaverton. The rate of return is not guaranteed. If one hauler is operating less efficiently, they may only make a 2% rate of return, even if the system averages 8%. This provides a strong incentive for each company to work efficiently within the regulated system. As part of the franchises, all haulers pay franchise fees to Beaverton. Beaverton's regulation includes administrative rules that all franchised haulers must follow. These rules outline collection standards, customer service procedures, service response times, and much more. If the city does not feel the haulers are meeting the current needs of the customers, you have the power to hold us accountable to the service standards you expect. Next slide, please.
The current system decreases traffic on Beaverton's streets by designating waste service to one hauler for a specific area. A citywide franchise for Dropbox services would require another provider to drive trucks over all of the city, which would increase truck traffic on the same streets that Beaverton's existing franchise haulers already service. Currently, haulers are not driving across the city to service a customer, while another hauler may service their neighbor or even a second service at that same customer. Dropbox services are routed to have as few what we call empty frame trips as possible, which means we strategically route things to deliver a new Dropbox near the next Dropbox that needs to be collected. By doing this, we eliminate a lot of empty trips driving across the city. Even with the nature of Dropbox services, adding another hauler that would overlay the service area would create inefficiency and redundancy in the system. Eliminating the current boundaries and replacing them with a citywide franchise would also cause an increase to traffic, greenhouse gas emissions, wear and tear on city streets, and noise pollution. More than 90% of Beaverton customers currently receive service via trucks fueled by renewable natural gas. Natural gas vehicles reduce particulate matter emissions by 86% and reduce greenhouse gas emissions by 25%. The haulers have made investments in natural gas vehicles and fueling infrastructure at their sites to help the city, region, and state meet their climate goals. Approving this application would add more diesel trucks to Beaverton services, which would negatively impact the air quality in Beaverton. Next slide, please.
So the city's regulated rate process gives the Beaverton haulers an incentive to operate as efficiently as possible, which typically includes hauling waste to the most efficient location. For example, even though waste management has its own transfer station, waste management disposes of Beaverton's wet waste at the metro facility in northwest Portland. Waste management also has an account at Greenway should a project or job warrant hauling to their facility. We make these choices when it reduces truck travel and is efficient to do so. While the question before you today is about the Dropbox collection franchise, not regional transfer stations, it is important we address this topic because of how frequently it was mentioned in the franchise application. Metro regulates all transfer stations in the region. Any facility that processes dry waste must meet a standard for Metro's enhanced dry waste recovery program. Dry waste is basically construction and demolition debris, material that does not have food in it. Both waste-
as efficiently as possible, which typically includes hauling waste to the most efficient location. For example, even though Waste Management has its own transfer station, Waste Management disposes of Beaverton's wet waste at the Metro facility in northwest Portland. Waste Management also has an account at Greenway should a project or job warrant hauling to their facility. We make these choices when it reduces truck travel and is efficient to do so. While the question before you today is about the Dropbox collection franchise, not regional transfer stations, it is important we address this topic because of how frequently it was mentioned in the franchise application. Metro regulates all transfer stations in the region. Any facility that processes dry waste must meet a standard for Metro's Enhanced Dry Waste Recovery Program. Dry waste is basically construction and demolition debris, material that does not have food in it. Both Waste Management and Pride's facilities meet these Metro standards. There has also been much talk about the differences in the rates at the transfer stations. The thing to understand is that Metro has been able to keep their rates lower by subsidizing their rates with reserves that were being blended from their operations and their regional system fees, which every transfer station pays. As of this last year, Metro has separated out their reserve funds and are making an effort to get their rates to the actual cost to service, which has lowered the delta between the Metro facilities and the private transfer station facilities. While Metro used the reserves to lower their rates, private transfer stations pay into those reserves from private transfer station rates. Metro is also taking steps to move towards rate regulation of the private transfer stations. As recently as this past month, December 17th, at the Metro Work Session, this was discussed, and Metro Council agreed that rate regulation is the direction they're most likely moving in. Next slide, please.
The current system works because there is predictability. Our companies do not need to have extra trucks, equipment, or staff on hand to cover the volatility of an unpredictable system. We can plan our equipment purchases and our hiring needs for the work within our service area, which keeps costs as low as possible for customers and eliminates redundancy within the city. The applicant indicated they need to buy trucks and equipment to serve all of Beaverton. According to our rate consultant, who you received a written public comment from, approving this application could result in an increased cost to Beaverton ratepayers of 6% on the haul fees and the delivery fees. The current system provides the same quality of service to all customers. A customer who may be more difficult to service, less profitable, or may have less recyclables in a load is not turned away. The citywide franchise would allow the applicant to cherry pick certain types of Dropbox loads across the entire city. They could choose only to service the boxes that have a high amount of recyclable material to bring back to their facility, or the customers who are perceived to be more profitable and easier to service. Allowing a Dropbox franchise that overlays the existing boundaries is antithetical to the franchise system you have in Beaverton. The haulers have been asked if we would be interested in changing the entire Dropbox system so all haulers can service the entire city, and our response to that is no, for all of the reasons we've discussed. But if you approve this application, that is the natural next step, and this would cause major inefficiencies in routing, staffing, and equipment use, and would also cause redundancy in this service. Approving this application would result in higher system-wide costs to the ratepayers, while the applicant would benefit financially at the expense of the Beaverton customers and the other haulers. Next slide, please.
Thanks, Kristin. So the Beaverton haulers are a group of diverse companies, including several family-owned businesses. All of us have participated in the Driving Diversity Program, where eligible participants earn their commercial driver's license via a 12-week garbage truck training program. This program prioritizes getting people of color and women into these jobs. The training program has been hosted by Pride Disposal, as well as Waste Management, most recently right here in Beaverton this last summer in 2024. Beaverton haulers now have graduates of this program serving the Beaverton community. Beaverton haulers also participate in annual diversity and unconscious bias training. The Beaverton haulers are proud to provide jobs with living wages and full benefits, and all drivers providing Dropbox services are members of the Teamsters Union. Next slide, please.
The city of Beaverton is responsible for setting the regulations that all franchised haulers must meet, ensuring that we meet the needs of the community. If the city would like to have different rules or feel that we are missing the mark somewhere, we urge you to work with your solid waste staff to make those changes so we can continue to meet the ever-changing needs of the city and our customers. My family has been in the solid waste and recycling industry for over 100 years, and we've been providing services in Washington County since 1986. I'm the fourth generation of my family to work in this industry. Many of the other hauler representatives in this room have similar stories of longtime partnerships in Beaverton and the surrounding areas. The haulers' partnerships in the community are longstanding, and we continue to be committed to providing excellent service in Beaverton for years to come. The Beaverton Code states that an applicant must show a need for a new franchise in order for one to be granted. If the haulers are all following the rules as laid out by the city, and there is no inability for our companies to provide the services as prescribed, then there is no need to add a new franchisee. The applicant is asking you to change the current system, not because there is a need, but because they want to drive more material to their transfer station for their own financial benefit. The five franchise Beaverton haulers respectfully request that you deny the applicant's request and that a need has not been shown, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Are there any questions of the speaker? Counselor Teter?
I just have one, and I'm just wondering if you can touch on the difference in recycling rates between our current haulers and the applicant? I would assume this is because current haulers also deal with a lot of wet waste, whereas the Dropboxes be more dry waste, but I would love y'all's perspective on that.
So the recovery rate is limited to just the dry waste, so the wet waste is not calculated in that. Part of it has to do with different technology at the facilities, and some of that has to do with the amount of tons going through each facility and the ability to kind of have those economies of scale. I can speak to my facility, so we have Pride Disposal, which is our hauling company, and Pride Recycling, which is a separate legal entity, which is our transfer station. But our transfer station, we've been making some improvements and changes to increase our recovery rate. Two of those changes, one that has been in place for six months, so it will be in our 2024 report but hasn't come out yet, should add an additional 10% to our recovery rate, and that has to do with alternative daily cover that we're now able to send as a higher and better use to be used over cells in the landfill instead of using rock or gravel and sand and things like that. And it's an approved use by DEQ to use those smaller materials that come out of the mix. So that will increase our recovery rate by approximately 10%. And then also, we recently found an outlet for some of our wood that we had been unable to recycle for some time that should add another 10% to our recovery facility. We just sent the first load down there yesterday. So those two things combined for my facility will add approximately 20% to our recovery rate, bringing us to about 42%, I believe. So our recovery rate is going up. We're constantly looking for different avenues, and sometimes we have an outlet for one material, and then it goes away for a period of time, and while we explore other options. So there is a little bit of ebb and flow to that.
Counselor Dogger?
Thank you for this. We received a number of feedback, a number of letters from both residential and commercial customers outlining the need for more options for bulk disposable, bulk disposal, particularly builders. That seems to be, there were a number of letters from home builders and just builders in general. Can you tell me what existing options you have that are not deployed within the city of Beaverton that we could maybe do, you know, implement quickly, right? Are there other options? Because I know other cities have different options than we do, different bulk options and drop options and stuff like that.
I'm not sure I understand your question. Are you asking about where people can drop material off or related to the collection of the Dropboxes or where that material goes?
Well, just, I guess a number of the letters reference just the difficulty in getting, I guess, timing and stuff like that. And so is it a function of us not having enough boxes? Do we need to buy more? Like, what is the solution with the existing providers to the issues raised by our commercial and residential customers? Do you have stuff on the shelf, I guess, is my question. I hope that makes sense.
Yeah, I mean, I think to answer, and tell me if I'm not getting to your question, but we keep a large amount of Dropboxes in our yard to handle the heaviest times of the year or the heaviest years. And then when those boxes, you know, when the economy slows down and construction slows down, then those boxes just sit empty in our yard. And it is a fine line between having enough boxes so you can always accommodate a customer's request and not having 50 extra boxes that sit untouched. So it is a balance, and that's where we talked about the predictability in the system that's needed. So right now, we know in my service area, the average number of hauls I have in a year, and of course, there can be anomalies, but we staff our company to deal with those averages, and we have the equipment to deal with those averages. So of course, occasionally, we miss the mark, and especially coming out of COVID, there were some staffing challenges we all faced, which is part of why we helped the Portland haulers originally and then brought to Washington County develop the Driving Diversity Training Program to get more people into the workforce to do those jobs, because I think as a region, we were all struggling to find drivers. So I'm not saying there haven't been challenges, but those are some of the ways we try and address them.
Thank you.
I think it's also important to note that, you know, the complexities of dry waste, there can be, it's not a simple, just, you know, put in a request and have a Dropbox delivered. There's a lot of questions that really entail being asked before the boxes are delivered to ensure that we're meeting the expectations with, you know, the DEQ, asbestos material, and so forth. So there's certainly a lot of questions and potentially testing involved with some of that material, specific to construction demolition jobs, too.
And let me ask one quick thought. Do you ever, amongst the five existing franchised haulers, do you ever share those Dropboxes, right? So if maybe Pride is over, you know, to your point, the seasonality, right? You send them all out. Do you ever borrow one maybe from Waste Management in order to service your geographic area? Is that a possibility?
It's definitely a possibility. Typically, what happens if that's needed is I would say we work with another hauler to do a subcontract for that job, so they would actually not only let us borrow the Dropbox, but also use their truck to place it for us. So I would, you know, I can't think of a recent example that my company has needed to do that, but I know that we all work very collaboratively together and are able to do that when needed.
Counselor Teter?
Thank you. So it sounds like you are in communication with each other since you service different parts of the city. You have, I'm sure, different, unique characteristics of each of those regions, and you're kind of staffed up and have the right equipment to deal with whatever region you're in. But are there consistencies around the amount of time it takes on average from when someone orders one to when it is delivered across all of the haulers? I'd heard three to seven days, I think, in testimony from the applicant. Is that, do you have the same accounting of that? And is there a consistency? And even if you happen to know, outside of Beaverton, like, do we have information on what the typical wait time is to get a Dropbox?
So for my company, what I can say is, as part of preparing for this presentation, we went back and looked at the last year of Dropboxes specifically provided to the city of Beaverton, and we were able to document based on the notes and when people called and when boxes were delivered that unless a customer specifically called to say, hey, I would like to get a box delivered next Friday, and they're scheduling further out for their own planning ahead purposes, which we always appreciate, we were able to document that for every request that we got, we were able to accommodate it within one business day. And, you know, sometimes if they're calling at 2:00 in the afternoon, that's kind of past the end of the day for our drivers, so we can get it to them the next day. Sometimes if they call at 9:00 AM, we're able to get it to them the same day. But we were able to document that all of our Beaverton calls were handled within one business day within the last calendar year.
Waste Management, we also strive on meeting the city of Beaverton's expectations on deliveries for the customer. As we discussed before, you know, the summertime, that always prevents challenges with the, you know, the busier season for this Dropbox volumes. But, you know, we always get creative if we need to. If it means, you know, perhaps maybe the customer wants a 30-yard Dropbox, but maybe we're out of those because of the volume and the increased request at that time, you know, we'll make that accommodation if it means bringing two boxes to the site and still meet those expectations for the customers.
And I would just add that we view the three days in the rule as the lowest bar. We are always trying to be above and beyond that. So just because we have three days within the rules does not mean we say, well, we have three days, we'll get it to you when we get it to you. The goal is to get it to the customer as soon as possible.
We do aim to do the next-day delivery, but if not, yes, we meet that city of Beaverton expectation of three days.
Thank you. Darbyel. Yeah. We move on to the individuals in opposition. Mike Leichner? Yes. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Name is Mike Leichner. I'm the Vice President of Pride Disposal and Pride Recycling Companies. Thunderbird's application focuses on a reported higher recovery rate at their facility, Greenway. I've been in contact over the years with the owner of Greenway as we had purchased their Washington County franchise when they decided that they couldn't make enough money and wanted to move out of the county in 2007. His reason for selling that franchise was to fund the development and structure of Greenway. The tonnage into their facility has declined over the year, last year or two, as ours has because of the economy slowing down. They are now asking for help from the city of Beaverton to replace that tonnage by applying for a franchise through Thunderbird in Beaverton, using increased recycling as a primary reason. Mr. Garrett has admitted that we would not be able to achieve a high recovery rate at our facility, Pride Recycling, for several reasons. Pride serves everyone except more non-recyclable material loads. Pride's customer base does not have a high recycling loads that Greenway's selected customers have. Pride processes all of the dry waste in their facility regardless of its high recovery potential or not. We do not turn loads away. Pride Disposal routes its commercial collection trucks to separate dry waste commercial stops, like office buildings and such on the front loaders, from wet waste. Then we run those loads over our belt. There's not a lot of material in those loads, but we do try to get an extra 1% or 2% or 3% of those loads out because we're committed to that high recycling requirement. This lowers our overall recovery rate, but addresses a larger segment of customers. The other differences in our facilities include when we find a load with a potentially high recovery rate or customers who are not separating the materials, we make sure that the customer is aware of our source separate recycling programs. This process often saves the customer money and provides a cleaner stream of recyclable material rather than mixing all material in one Dropbox and then trying to separate it out to the same level of quality. Those are the reasons why we have the issue. So thank you for your time to allow me to speak to some of our differences.
Thank you. Lexi Garberino? Yeah. You have two minutes to speak.
I'm Lexi Garberino. I'm owner of Garberino Disposal, a family-owned, female-run small business. My company employs 30 individuals, including a former foster youth, two ex-felons who have turned their lives around, and many others who rely on the stability of this work to support their families. This work is not glamorous, but it's essential. The franchise system we have in place provides them with a lifeline, a stable, union-backed job that allows my employees to support their families and build a future. When we talk about diversity, it's not just about who owns the business. It's about the people who make the business run, the individuals who are given a second chance in their lives, in my case, in my employees. The franchise system isn't just about providing service, it's about providing consistency and equity. If this system were to change, my cost as a small business would skyrocket. I'd need to allocate significant funds for marketing to retain customers. I'd have to invest in additional trucks and Dropboxes to compete for a larger and less predictable service area, and yet there would be no guarantee I'd secure enough customers to make those investments sustainable. Costs would inevitably rise, not just for me, but for all the haulers, and those increases would be passed on to the citizens of Beaverton that you represent. Customers who are currently served equitably would be at risk of being left behind, as haulers would naturally gravitate towards the most profitable accounts. Moreover, the franchise system is what makes it possible for small businesses like mine to thrive alongside players like Waste Management. Right now, WM is my ally. We work together to ensure Beaverton's needs are met. But if Thunderbird enters the system, Waste Management becomes my competitor. And let's face it, I can't compete with their marketing budget, fleet size, and technology. This isn't just about one new hauler entering the market. By adding Thunderbird, you would effectively be removing Garberino Disposal. It would be nearly impossible for us to thrive in a system that forces us to compete for customers. When you consider Thunderbird's application, ask yourself, what problem are you solving? Thunderbird has not demonstrated a need for services, they have not proven that costs would go down, and they have not provided any evidence that the current system is not working. If it's not broken, don't fix it. Please reject this application and protect Beaverton's proven system. Thank you.
Thank you. John Romero? You have two minutes.
Counselors, my name is John Romero. I'm an owner of Evergreen Disposal and Recycling, and also of Washington County Dropbox Service. Evergreen Disposal has a very small slice of the pie in the city of Beaverton, but Washington County Dropbox is probably the biggest or one of the biggest Dropbox haulers within the county. We are primarily a subcontracting. or one of the biggest drop box haulers within the county. We are primarily a subcontracting company, Washington County Dropbox, that is. So over the years, over the last fifty years we've been in business, we have acted as a subcontractor for smaller companies who couldn't afford in many ways or didn't want to put the resources into drop box hauling themselves. One of the problems with drop box hauling is it's very expensive. The trucks are very expensive. You can only use them in one line of service. And then drop boxes, even though they're just big empty metal boxes, they're also prohibitively expensive. And that subcontracting part is really what I wanted to talk to you about. In the past, when Mr. Garrett had a garbage hauling franchise within the county, he did not haul his own drop boxes. He subcontracted them with Washington County Dropbox. Now, his reasons for doing so would have been the same that many haulers had probably over the years, which is it's able to use resources in other areas, saving money, time, and so forth. But I'd have to ask the question of why does he want a drop box hauling franchise now? My answer probably would be that he has a material recovery facility now. He didn't have that back then, which means that he can potentially make money on the haul fee part of a billing and also on the disposal part of the billing, which would be a financial advantage for him. So what I wanted to just make clear is that is what Mr. Garrett doing the best of the people of Beaverton or perhaps what's best for him from a business point of view? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Kari McCollunga?
Good evening, counselors. Thank you for your time. My name is Kari McCullough. I am a resident of the city of Beaverton. My family has owned and operated Walker Garbage Service since nineteen forty-eight, and we are a founding partner of Washington County Dropbox Service. And I'm going to address a customer service piece of this. And I do want to acknowledge any frustration expressed by customers who feel their needs haven't been met. As haulers, we care very deeply about the satisfaction of every residential and business customer we serve in the city of Beaverton. We take any feedback very seriously. For our company, our customers are also our neighbors. We live on our route and we have for many, many years. Our name is on our trucks that travel down the street. So we take customer service and customer feedback very seriously. We also recognize that you as city councilors often hear from citizens who are frustrated about a number of issues, whether it's traffic or street maintenance or public service like waste collection. In each case, the city works diligently to address concerns. Similarly, the franchise system empowers haulers to address specific customer concerns while maintaining the reliability and equity of service for all customers. And it's important to keep in mind the scale of the operation. It's gratifying to hear five hundred total complaints and two of drop box services when we serve tens of thousands of customers across the city of Beaverton. A single complaint represents a fraction of a percent of the total customers we serve. Moreover, there's no guarantee that introducing a new hauler would reserve, would resolve an individual's frustration. In fact, overlapping services could even be more confusing and lead to a greater inconsistency. So we want to acknowledge your hard work and thank you for the ability to speak today.
Thank you. Beth Vargas?
Members of the council, I'm Beth Vargas Duncan with Oregon Refuge and Recycling Association. And tonight, I'm speaking on behalf of the Beaverton garbage haulers. Beaverton's current system offers a just right amount of capacity. If the city grants the applicant's request, Beaverton's current five franchisees should have the same opportunity. That would make six citywide franchises and require redundant infrastructure. Beaverton customers already invested in drop boxes and trucks that service the city. The, the application itself notes a need to buy another truck and many, like about twenty-eight more drop boxes. That is what contributes to that six percent cost increase that our CPA estimated. Beaverton's existing drop box system supports basic franchise tenants for efficiency by using individual designated geographic areas. Citywide service would necessitate further driving distances because typically drivers leave the yard with an empty box, drive to the customer, change out the drop box, and take it to disposal. Regardless of disposal site distance, the initial drive to the customer would be farther with a larger territory citywide. Considering performance metrics for routing, route distance is recognized as the biggest factor impacting delivery efficiency, loading time, number of deliveries per driver, even traffic conditions fall second to route distance. If the current franchised haulers need to make a change, the city of Beaverton, all of you here, can set a standard and the franchises, franchisees will meet it per their franchise. Why create a citywide franchise? There is no actual need. Who benefits? Not Beaverton's community. We respectfully ask that you decline the application. Thank you.
Thank you. Johnny Meek?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Johnny Meek. I am a proud resident of the city of Beaverton. As someone who believes in the Beaverton's Waste Management System, I want to start by acknowledging how well it works. The franchise system ensures every resident in business receives reliable, equitable, and consistent service. I've never had to wonder if my garbage or recycling is being picked up. I just, it just gets done quietly and efficiently by people who know their part in the community. I followed the Thunderbird's application closely, and frankly, I, I struggled to understand the justification of the proposal. The current system works, and there's no evidence that it isn't meeting the needs of our city. What the Thunderbird's proposal isn't above solving the problems, and it's creating one, allowing them to, them into a system that would force the city staffed and divert valuable time and resources from important community initiatives and manage change to the benefits that no one except the Thunderbirds. As a taxpayer, I want my dollars to be spent wisely. Those dollars should be used to improve Beaverton's infrastructure, support schools, and help vulnerable populations, not, not to subsidize one's company's attempt to profit from disrupting the system that has served us well for decades. Approving the Thunderbird's application would take money out of other communities and hand it into, to a business that has offered no proof that they can do the job better. At the end of the day, this isn't, at the end of the day, this isn't about improving services, lowering costs, or adding value to Beaverton. It's about a company that is for a change to serve their, their interests and others, please do not, I'm sorry, to others. Please don't use Beav, City of Beaverton's resources to fix something that isn't broken. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone? Okay. So that concludes the public testimony. We will move on to the applicant's rebuttal. Applicant has now five minutes to respond to the testimony.
Clearly, lots of platitudes and promises. I live in the world of facts. Fact number one, I did own a franchise in Washington County, and I did sell it. I sold it because the rules changed and it was no longer going to be economic to operate. I also already owned Greenway Recycling at that time. I did not use that money to start Greenway, although it did go that direction. This mix of materials in the, there, there's this inference that my facility that I own turns away crummy loads and only takes the beautiful cherry loads. In fact, seventeen to twenty percent of the material at my facility is construction demolition. The rest is commercial and industrial, low-quality loads. Despite that, I get the high recovery rates because I saw the future and I invested in good recycling technology. Because I thought that by doing that, material would come to me. But instead, the haulers continue to use their captive facilities to enrich themselves and refuse to use my superior services. Now, talking about diversity, you know, it's one thing to talk about. It's another thing to live it. We own it. We drive. Jackson's sole employee is Hispanic. We're Hispanic. We don't talk about it. We are it. Problems with competing. I don't understand it because I'm willing to compete in that marketplace. And if I am, I don't see why others can't or won't or are scared of us. And, you know, eighty-nine percent of Beaverton is under Waste Management. The inclusion of us doesn't change driving distances. It doesn't increase cost. You know, the, your own consultant has said that. Your consultant is the one that advises you, not their paid consultant. A few other quick things. Family wage jobs, drivers make ninety-five hundred thousand dollars. So that's a pretty family wage, good wage job. At my facility, Greenway, my laborers make fifty to fifty-five thousand dollars a year. At other facilities, most of them, they're temporary laborers making barely over minimum wage. In fact, about eight years ago, I'm the one that shamed Metro into paying their laborers at their garbage facilities a living wage, which I'd do today as a result of my efforts. I believe in a living wage, and I walk that walk. We've already talked about the rate of return, the fees, et cetera. Point of interest, that facility that's shown on the presentation is actually a single-string curbside material facility. It is not a dry waste facility. Looks kind of like mine almost, but, so, I don't know what to say except that I'm trying to do the right thing here. Does it soften rich? Absolutely. Yes. Why is it wrong for me to make a living when the existing haulers take and haul stuff to their own facility, and that's okay? But for me to do it, it's wrong? Especially when I have better recovery rates, lower prices? I, I don't understand it. So if you have any questions.
Thank you. We're gonna do rebuttal. To rebuttal, only if new evidence is introduced? City Attorney?
Counsel, I didn't hear new evidence during the rebuttal.
Right. Okay. Thank you. Does any member of the council have any questions for staff? Counselor Tivnun? Please, staff coming up?
Thank you. Could you walk us through the, the franchise process? So we, we have a certain number within the city. I see the criteria for adding a new one. And there's certain things that's like, if you see a big increase in the population or the boundaries or the other types of things that are on here that were irrelevant in this case. Extension boundaries, intensive residential, commercial, industrial development within the boundaries above and beyond. I'm guessing, I'd be interested to know how that's measured. But is there any kind of cyclical nature to franchisees having to reapply for their franchise? Is there a competitive process at any natural place within it outside of these different types of parameters that were used for this application?
It's a broad question. Our Beaverton's franchise kind of starts with, there's a ten-year franchise that they are given permission to operate for ten years or authority to operate for a ten-year period. And every three years, the city does a review to make sure they're meeting standards that are acceptable. And then at the council's prerogative, you have the option at that point of extending the franchise term back from the seven years back out to the ten years, which, as far as the franchise system goes, enables the haulers to know that they will have the ability to return, to recoup their investment. So if they're buying new trucks, they have seven years basically to pay for them. If you don't have seven years left in the franchise, then you have some risk that you would not be able to pay for the cost of your trucks in the, in a seven-year amortization cycle. So there's, they're operating for a ten-year period. In Beaverton's case, our original franchises were awarded back in the seventies or eighties, long before my time, and we didn't, I didn't look up exactly when they all started, but it was long ago. And then over time, and we had, back in the year two thousand, when I started here, we had like ten or eleven franchises. And over time, the, the change in our franchises has been someone buying, a company buying an existing franchise. And then we come to council with a, approval for a franchise transfer. So the five current franchises that we have all either have had a franchise for a very long time or purchased a franchise from someone else. In recent years, West Slope garbage sold to Evergreen. As we heard earlier, Mr. Garrett's company, Armstrong Disposal, sold to Pride back in the early two thousand and five, six, something like that. And other companies, they, they buy other companies, but there has not been a natural point where we put the entire system up for a competitive opportunity to get into the system, if that's what you're asking. I don't know if I left out any part of what you were.
No, that, that was what I was asking. And I, I can see why not, because we haven't experienced massive growth in a relatively short amount of time. We are, kind of now, with South Cooper Mountain coming online and then Cooper Mountain, eventually North Cooper Mountain. I, I could see there perhaps being a point where it's like looking at it from system-wide, are the needs being met? If there's an uptick in complaints or if we see wait times increasing or things like that. But it sounds like it's been holding pretty steady from what I'm hearing.
Correct. And even in, in the case of South Cooper Mountain and Cooper Mountain, I mean, I believe it's state law that has regulations that if there is a solid waste franchise for a company for an area of unincorporated parts of a county, that is then brought into an incorporated area, that franchise transfers over and then becomes part of the new system and their cycle. So basically, all of Washington County is under some level of franchise regulation, maybe not from the city of Beaverton, but there may be, it is assigned a franchise for somebody. So as we annex South Cooper Mountain and the Cooper Mountain area, the current franchisee would then become the franchisee for whatever development happens in that area.
Okay. That's very helpful. Thank you.
Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, I have a, a couple of questions, or a question really. And feel free to share your opinion, because I know this is not a yes, no, black and white science question. I've heard kind of between reading all the letters, hearing the testimonies, I've kind of categorized the issues we're discussing into, to, to maybe an opportunity around higher recycling rates, maybe. And then maybe an, an option for an expanded availability or more affordable service. In your opinion, can we achieve that in our existing system working with our existing haulers? If that was a goal of this council?
If that's a goal of this council, then we would definitely work to achieve that and could see, we think there can be some improvement in some of those areas. Some are a little more challenging in that the, the current kind of regulatory infrastructure, as was noted- kind of regulatory infrastructure, as was noted, and that we regulate who collects it, we don't necessarily have much control over where it goes. But would prioritize pushing the regulators like Metro to, both with rates and/or enhanced recovery to improve those rates at those facilities.
So you're, in your opinion, I'm hearing that it is possible?
Yes.
Thank you.
Does staff have any further comments or clarification regarding proposed application? None?
I think not. We've learned much through this process and have much that we think needs some attention for future rules and sometimes, sometimes what we work on is brought off by, we get a lot of complaints or comments or a lot of questions and issues. And I think this entire process, the last number of months, has identified both some code and administrative rules that will need some attention at some point in the near future.
Thank you. Does the city attorney have any further comments?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Hearing no further questions from the council, the public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion? Counselor Teeter?
Yes, I'd, I'd like to make a motion. I move to direct staff to prepare in order denying the citywide solid waste Dropbox franchise application for Thunderbird Dropbox LLC on the following basis. One, the Beaverton Code and applicable administrative rules do not allow for a single-service solid waste franchise. And two, even if the Beaverton Code did allow for a single-service solid waste franchise, the applicant has not demonstrated a need for the service based on the criteria outlined. And Beaverton Code four point oh eight, point one hundred, point C. And lastly, three, the applicant has not demonstrated that the existing franchise haulers cannot perform the service under Beaverton Code four point oh eight, point one hundred, point E, point one.
Second?
It's moved by Counselor Teeter, seconded by Counselor Duggar. Any discussion? I see none. Oh, Counselor Hartmeyer, actually Counselor Hassan.
Yeah, I, I, oh, my, oh, there I am, okay. Hi, thank you, everybody. I just want to take a moment and recognize the testimony, this application, the current motion that's on the table. It's really hard to grapple with these questions and then also right here from our NACS and the different organizations and see what folks are saying and try to balance that. I think a little bit of what Counselor Duggar was alluding to is what does it look like for us to make sure we're providing the optimal service for our residents and our community and what does that look like? And so while I am leaning towards supporting the current motion, I do want to make sure that we're thinking about what does it look like for us to have a system that's meeting the needs of our community? I'll stop there and hear from the rest.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
Thank you. I just wanted to share my support for the motion that Counselor Teeter made, you know, in reviewing all of the information provided to us and the staff recommendation with the various criteria. I believe that denying the application is the correct choice this evening.
Counselor Duggar?
Yeah, I'm in support of, of the motion, obviously I seconded it, but primarily because we, we haven't really addressed the specific problem, tried to address the specific problems with our existing system. I'm open to bringing in another one, but we have to try to address it with our partners, that's how relationships work. Right? You addressing with the people that are in the existing system that are working hard every day. And if that doesn't happen, then that's, that's a different conversation in time. But in my mind, this is a, an important first step for us to, to show our existing haulers that we trust them, that we're willing to work with them to solve these problems. And, and, you know, that's where I'm at and that's why I, I support this motion.
Counselor Tifnon?
This is, it reminds me of the conversation and it was brought up in the applicant's presentation about Ridwell that happened a few years ago. We had a similar conversation but different in that there was a need that was currently not be met around hard-to-recycle materials and a, a lot of interest in the community of having a service that would allow them to do that. It was compelling and it also, for me, opened up this idea that was also mentioned, which is allowing emerging small businesses, minority-owned businesses, women-owned businesses, other disadvantaged business enterprises to be able to compete. And, but it fell into that criteria where I felt there was room for exploration because it was an unmet need. And that's where I'm tripping up here is, is, is the need, the need being unmet by our, our current haulers. And based on the testimony and based on recommendations of staff, I'm not seeing a need currently. I do recognize the feedback from the Home Builders Association, from NAOP, from other builders and other neighborhood associations, talking about development, talking about the pace of it, the fact that we have a rainy season and a building season in a lot of ways and that there's, there's just pressures on the system when you're trying to have those materials ready, but then periods of time where you don't need as much of it and how hard that must be from a business perspective of fulfilling that. It sounds like at, at the moment, nothing is a hundred percent perfect. I think everyone's gonna, in, in the customer service, have it room to improve. I would be open to revisiting this if we see a, a really loud uptick in need and it's not being fulfilled to help us build the housing that we need, to help us continue to support our business community in commercial and industrial. But I'm in support of the motion for tonight, given what we've heard.
Thank you. We are ready for the motion to deny the application for the Dropbox franchise. Would the city recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Duggar?
Yes.
Counselor Hartmeyer Prigg?
Yes.
Counselor Hassan?
Yes.
Council President Kimmy?
Yes.
Counselor Teeter?
Yes.
Counselor Tifnon?
Yes.
Six, zero.
Thank you. We'd like to thank all of who testified tonight, your comments are very helpful. The next item on the agenda is the first reading of the ordinance. Okay. On February fourth, two thousand twenty-five, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance annexing one parcel of land near the intersection of Southwest Beaverton Hillsdale Highway and Southwest Polar Lane, withdrawing the property from the Washington County Enhanced Sheriff's Patrol District and Washington County Urban Road Maintenance District and adding the property to the West Slope Neighborhood Association Committee, LU three two zero two four dash zero one zero two nine, Polar Lane Annexation, ANX two zero two four dash zero one zero two six. We have another first reading of ordinance. On February fourth, two thousand twenty-five, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held regarding an ordinance amending the comprehensive plant land use map and the zoning map for the one parcel near the intersection of Southwest Beaverton Hillsdale Highway and Southwest Polar Lane. And I would, abutting, abutting, sorry, abutting right of the way located along Southwest Polar Lane, LU three two zero two four zero one zero two nine, Polar Lane Annexation. Next, can Counselor Duggar read? Yes. Go ahead. This one, yeah.
Next, we have another first reading of an ordinance. On February fourth, two thousand twenty-five, during the regularly scheduled city council meeting, a public hearing will be held requesting an ordinance amending the zoning map for one parcel at thirty-six forty, Southwest Hundred and Tenth Avenue, LU three two oh two four dash zero zero nine two one, Kaiser Auto Zone Change ZMA, ZMA three two oh two four zero zero nine one eight. That concludes our first reading ordinancees for tonight.
Thank you, Counselor Duggar. We'll take a five-minute break before the work session. We'll be back by forty-five, seven forty-five.
Recording stopped. Recording in progress.
Okay, we are back in session. The next item on the agenda is work session regarding the water rate structure review. We will begin the work session with the presentation by Assistant Finance Director Susan Cole, joined by Doug Gabbert, Kep, Gabbert, okay. And, and you know what, John, from FCS Group. When the presentation is done, each counselor will have the opportunity to comment on the presentation and ask questions of the presenter. Please begin.
Good evening. My name is Susan Cole, I'm the Assistant Director for the Finance Department. And I'm joined with Doug Gabbert and John Gullarducci from the FCS Group. And in the audience, just in case we need to phone a friend, is Zecharia Hazel, he's also from the consulting company, just in case there's some questions that the three of us couldn't answer. So tonight, we have a PowerPoint presentation on our water rate structure. This is the second work session after we have done some public outreach, so we'll talk a little bit about that in a minute. So, next slide. So just real quick, a quick overview. We are in the fifth year of a multi-year financial model to increase our water rates. This slide here shows you how we've been ramping up over time and, and we will continue to increase our rates over time to continue investments in the water system. Next slide. So the context for our water rates have to do with major investments we're making in the Willamette Water Supply System and some financing we got through the Environmental Protection Agency for the WIFIA program to finance connections to that Willamette Water Supply Program, as well as make our system seismically resilient and invest in future infrastructure. Next slide. So in order to accomplish these capital investments, we are investing in a lot of debt over time. This slide here shows you the debt service structure of the water fund out to fiscal year twenty sixty-two, which is quite a long planning horizon. You can see here by the brackets, the time period we're in now for this current rate planning horizon. So just as a reminder for our city council and the public, our water utility prides itself on being resilient. So these projects do add additional resiliency to the system. Not only will it add seismic resiliency, but also reliability to the water system itself as we provide more water to more customers. And interestingly, the city has enough water for forty-four days in storage. So if there is an emergency or other type of event where we are not able to get water from our treatment plants, we do have forty-four days' worth of water in storage. And just a piece of trivia for you, we maintain two thousand seven hundred and forty-six fire hydrants for the benefit of Tuolent Valley Water, or Tuolent Valley Fire District to keep our community safe. We also sample two hundred and twenty-five water samples throughout the month to ensure our drinking water is clean. And of course, we are investing in future supply for water security for our future vitality and economic growth. And with that, I will turn it over to FCS.
Thank you, Susan, thank you, Mayor and Council. So I'm going to focus on just three of these bubbles. If you look at the right-hand orange bubble, the revenue requirement forecast, that's the first major landmark in the rate study. That's where we determine how much money is needed from rates to meet all the financial obligations of the water utility. Looking at capital, the operating budget, debt service, all the components of cost that make up the resource needs. As we move around that circle to the cost of service analysis, that's where we take that pie that was the revenue requirement and determine who should be paying what among your customer classes based on the specific demands they have on the water utility. As an example, commercial customers have higher fire flow requirements, so they'll pay a little bit more of fire protection costs as a result of that cost of service analysis. And then moving further around to rate design, this is where the actual rate structure impacts the individuals who pay the rates in a fixed charge and a volume charge. That's the pricing signal sent to the customers. All of these steps or cost of service and rate design are designed and will produce that revenue requirement answer. So we calculate the rates in order to generate the amount of revenue that's needed to meet all the obligations of the utility. So a little bit of a deeper dive on the revenue requirement, determining all the resources that are needed. We look at financial policies, the, the fiscal policies needed to keep the utility financially healthy for the long term. I mentioned operating costs, those are pretty predictable from year to year. And then capital costs represented by the gold bars there. Because they vary a lot from year to year, one of our objectives is to smooth out the impacts of capital costs over time, and you can do that by issuing debt or other means. So you've seen this slide before, this is the result of the revenue requirement analysis. It, it's a financial plan, a multi-year financial plan for the water utility. You see seven and a half percent increases needed every year for through twenty twenty-nine, and then it levels off to essentially inflationary increases to meet the different needs of the water utility, and you see those labeled below, the big, the biggest chunk, that dark green, those are operating costs. And then you've got existing debt service, projected debt service, capital on top of that. So I mentioned the revenue requirement, the annual revenue requirement being the pie. If we think of that as the pie, the cost of service analysis is where we determine how to slice that pie among customer classes in the city of Beaverton, depending on their very specific demands. Once we have those cost pools, then we know where we need to make adjustments to align customer classes with the cost of service results. So what you're looking at here, tho- those aren't really to scale. Each of the bars there is is the extent to which the rates are consistent with the cost of service analysis for each class. So what this is telling you in a nutshell is that multifamily is being slightly overcharged based on the cost of service at a hundred and twenty-three percent of its costs. And single-family is on the lower end, it's about ninety-one percent, where it should be closer to a hundred percent of its costs based on the cost of service analysis. So our objective is to get everybody in that target range, closer to a hundred percent of their actual costs of service. And again, this doesn't show the dollars, if we were looking at dollars, you'd see single-family having a much higher dollar amount than everyone else because there's so many more customers. Testing, yeah. So the last time the three of us sat in front of you, we showed you three specific rate calculation approaches and two have survived to this round. So it's very exciting to see what's going to happen next. So just as a reminder, what those two that have survived are the across-the-board rate increases and the cost-of-service analysis-based rates, which include tiers for residential. Now, those are two separate things and we'll talk about that. The uniform rate results, the across-the-board rate results keeps in place the current rate structure you have now. And in that big box, you'll notice a rate schedule that looks remarkably like what you current, the way you currently charge. It's just that the rates are higher as you go to the right. You'll also notice that the rate increases are seven and a half percent three times in a row. Those all occur in three different fiscal years, but they're not all a year apart, and I just want to call that to your attention so nobody is surprised. We also called that to your attention last time. There's no change, all of this is the same as you saw last time. To, to do the crosswalk between what you see here and what you see in the staff report, what you see here is option one. This is option one, but it's also the beginning of option three, which is you start with the across-the-board rates and then go to the cost of
rates and then go to the cost of service, which I will show you now. So here, there are two things going on here. We are implementing cost-of-service rates, which is why, to speak to the bars that John just showed you, in the lower part of the big box, you will see different volume charges for different classes. And separately, you will also see different tiers, blocks one, two, and three, for single family to implement the tiered rate structure. So, so the tiers and the different customer class charges, those are, those are two different things that we are doing together here in this rate design. If you wonder if, which, which of these raises more money, they are calculated to raise exactly the same amount of money, so to facilitate easy comparison. This is a revenue-neutral comparison between these two. So this, this corresponds to option two in the staff report.
Thank you. Okay. So last time we were here was before the public outreach that, that staff did with the help of a subconsultant, Stanton Global Communications. And so these are the groups that we did some outreach to. You can see there on the slide. So some of the themes we heard from these various groups was an understanding regarding the need to increase rates. We had a lot of really great curiosity-type questions come up at these boards and commissions. We did hear one theme from all these groups, aside from the Chamber of Commerce, was a concern regarding multigenerational, multi-generational housing or households with many housemates, and how tiered rates might impact multi-generational housing. And we do not have a way to measure how many people live in a house. The way that we measure water is through the water meter. And so we can only make assumptions about water use and how many people might live there. So it's, it's really difficult for a water utility to discern how many people might be living in a home. But that was one theme that we heard throughout in all these different groups. Some other comments we heard through some of these groups, though not all, was water conservation is also a priority. And some of the individuals in these groups did like tiered rates because they felt it did give a price incentive to not irrigate as much. And so that was a large priority for several stakeholders. And another comment that we received is a desire for clarity regarding the rate structure. And so as we went through these dates here with the public outreach, we did modify our presentation and we added some fun slides. For example, a unit of water, which is 100 cubic feet of water, 748 gallons, it's hard to conceive of. So my staff added two five-person hot tubs is the equivalent of one unit of water, for example. So 748 gallons could fill two five-person hot tubs. And so that really helps people understand the quantity of water that they might be using because 748 gallons is a lot of water. And under these rate proposals, our, our current rate of $5.90 is less than three-quarters of a penny per gallon, which outcompetes what you can buy in the grocery store. So we still have very competitive rates with our water. So that, that's some of the themes we heard out of public outreach. And so I think I turn it back over to, yes, for some bill comparisons here.
And let's compare some of those bills. Let's, how much, how much does it cost to fill those hot tubs? So a couple of slides here that are very similar to ones you've seen before, but now we've updated them and we're only including the surviving rate designs. So this gives you a sense of, of what a rate design does. A rate design kind of creates winners and losers depending upon your particular usage pattern of water. So in this, in these clusters here, on the left side, you have the current rates, which you really shouldn't be comparing to anything. But the next two columns in each cluster, the first one, the darker orange, is the across-the-board rates, the option one. And the, the more yellowish mustardy column is the tiered cost-of-service rate. So you can see, if you, if you are really a low-water user, and all of these are single-family homes, if you're a low-water user, you're going to have a preference for the tiered rates. And if you're a heavy-water user, you're going to have a preference for the across-the-board rates. But you can see the magnitude, especially in, in the middle ranges, it's not, it's not huge. Also, our comparison across different jurisdictions is, is almost identical to what you saw before. We did update this where that was necessary, and there wasn't many that were needed. But this is a single, now, now we're focusing on a single-use case, a single-family residence using eight CCF of water per month. And then you have, you have this range of different bills. It is, it is utterly natural and reasonable for, for anyone to ask, why are some of these rates higher than ours? Why are some of these rates lower than ours? And because that's an inherently comparative question, I would have to know a lot more about each of the competing jurisdictions to be able to answer that. I can tell you that in Forest Grove, one of the reasons why theirs is so low is because they have other non-rate revenues, specifically timber, that helps offset their bills. But other than that, there's, there's just a lot of individual, individuality in these jurisdictions and it's very hard to compare. So let's continue with some comparisons.
So these slides, we're getting at the household question. So a two-person household might use four CCFs. We, we did some informal polling in the office. And so a two-person household would use four units. And so this first table here shows what a bill might look like for that individual with these different options. So currently, a four, a two-person household using four CCFs would pay $45.10. Under the across-the-board or the uniform rate structure, that same household would pay $48.47 or roughly 7.5% more, which is what was in FCS's earlier slide about across-the-board increases. If that same household were to instead have tiered rates applied, you'll notice that their bill would actually go down about $2 to $43.11. And that's what Doug was saying about winners and losers. So next, we go to a seven-person household. Again, this is a person within the city Beaverton in the Finance Department. They say that they have a multi-generational household with seven people in that house. And on average, they use 12 CCFs each month. So their current bill is $98.20. Under the across-the-board or uniform structure, that bill would go up to $105.53, or the seven and a half percent that we mentioned before. Under the tiered structure, their bill would go up $100 to $106.00 or $2.40. So not quite as much. So, so what this is showing is a multi-generational household would still pay more, but not as much more perhaps than maybe people thought in the beginning of our outreach. So next slide. So as Doug pointed out, and then I think John pointed out as well, this proposal does include two increases in the calendar year, even though they're two separate fiscal years. So we did want to point out that this proposal does have yet again an increase October 1st. And so this table right here, again, just compares it to follow the theme. If we take one of the March examples and pull that string through October, what the increases would look like. And you can just see the example there, that across the board, as their graph showed, they would go up seven and a half percent versus the tiered rates. And you can see respectively, the two-person household would, would go up 8.2% versus the seven-person household would go up 8.6%. Anyway, all those statistics are just to show the city council the differences and how these rate proposals would hit the various customers. So we're not, after we ran this analysis, we're not as concerned about the multi-generational comment. But this, again, is a seven-person household. It's hard to know how many people might live in one of those households.
Whenever possible, we like to demonstrate that we, we listen and we respond to the requests that we get from city councils. And this is one example of that. So last time we sat here, we were asked to do a little mapping for the city council. And one of them was based upon income. And that was, that was the one we were able to pull together and find, find the data for. This is a map of Beaverton, and what you see here are individual census tracts. And darker means more money. And you see that there is a geographic pattern to income in, in Beaverton. We, we are hoping at some point, maybe this could be compared to the water consumption map that you also asked for. We weren't able to get the data for that at this time. So to recap your options. Option one is to approve the water rates with no changes to the existing structure. Advantages of that, it's, it's the existing structure. Everybody has experience with it. Everybody knows what to expect. It's easily understood. Disadvantage is there are no class distinctions. We're not, we're not really as precise in allocating cost to the causes of those costs. And it also involves some higher residential increases. Option two, we approve the tiered rates. There you have a slightly stronger conservation incentive and in alignment with the cost of service, which is, which means that those who are incurring the cost to the utility will end up paying more. On the downside, it is more complicated. And, and to give you an additional angle on this, on the multi-generational household question, I'd like to give you a kind of a second dimension to think about that. A, a household with more residents, of course, is going to use more water than a smaller one. I'm not sure that's the right way to analyze it. Think about the multi-generational household and compare that not with a smaller household, but with multiple households. Because that's, that's the trade-off. And once you have fixed charges in the mix, even though the charges overall, the bill's going to be bigger, they're still doing better for being in that arrangement in many cases. So, for what it's worth. Option three is, is kind of a hybrid. You approve the water rates with no changes to the existing structure now with a plan to fully implement tiered rates in 2026. The pros and cons here are largely similar to option one for the immediate future. I also understand that there are some meter-reading improvements that, if I've understood it correctly, means that some costs are going to be driven down in the future, which may help with the implementation of the tiered rates when that time comes. Did I say that fairly?
Yeah, it's our advanced metering infrastructure. We'll have a year of experience if we put off tiered rates for a year, so.
So feedback and next steps. Should Beaverton move to a tiered rate structure or keep the existing structure? Just to be really clear and get this on the record again, option one, approve water rates with no changes to the existing structure. Option two, approve tiered rates. Option three, approve water rates with no changes to the existing structure with a plan to fully implement tiered rates in 2026. The next steps in the process are to have a public hearing currently scheduled for February 18th, and the rates will become effective, as you've seen on previous slides, on March 1st of this year.
And so what we're looking for is council direction on their preference on one of the, on the three options. And then we would bring that back on February 18th for a public hearing.
Thank you for that. Councilor Hartmire Prigg?
Thank you. My question is, I, I cannot recall from our last conversation or from the packet, can you refresh my memory on why we need to do a rate increase March 1st and October? Like why there was the two rate increases in 2025?
Sure. Generally, our rate increases have been in October every year, which we did not do this year in light of this analysis. And so our rate model has us increasing rates October 1st in order to make sure we have enough revenue for the debt service and to meet our operating needs. And so the March 1st, one way to think about it is a delay from this last October. And then we would get back to the October cycle this coming October.
Thank you, Susan. And with the target rate, the slide 12, where we see like we're not quite getting cost recovery with single family and getting over in some of the others, is, is, do any of the rate options kind of land us closer to that kind of standard rate recovery across? Like, does it even this out anymore?
Do our paper scissors. So, so yes, there is, between, between the two rate designs that we shared with you, they do attack this, this difference differently. So with option one, there, there would not be any change to the situation you see here. Option two would even these out to get all of the dark bars within the tan rectangle?
Okay.
So, so that's, that's what a cost, that's what implementing cost of service does, is it brings everybody in line with the cost of their service. And across-the-board increase would not do that.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Okay, can, well, I can see this question, I think, on my screen still. So, tiered rates are definitely something that we've been asking for, for a while. And I still firmly believe that it's the right choice for us to move towards. And so I'm, I'm leaning towards option two or three. I think that the main benefit of option three was just to kind of give us more time to communicate that the changes were coming. Sorry, I'm just double-checking. And so, but with any option, the rate increase will be the March and October, right? If we chose option one, two, or three, you're getting March, October, and then we'll get back to October generally in 2026.
Right, that, that's correct. Yeah. And the other reason, one of the reasons why staff put forward option three was because of the transition, the meter transition we had from an external meter reader to an in-house meter reading, and also the implementation of the advanced metering infrastructure. So that's why we put forward the option three.
Thank you, Susan. I didn't realize how much of a tongue twister that one would be to say that repeatedly. So, thank you. I just wanted to double-check. One more question, but I will just put my name back in the chat so I don't delay us if I have a follow-up question. So thank you.
Councilor Teeter?
Okay, thanks. There's a lot of good data here again. I also pretty strongly lean towards, moving towards a tiered rate changes. I saw a lot of feedback about multi-generational households and larger households. So I was glad you all mentioned that in particular because I was doing the math in my own head and like, okay, well, per person, it's like $14 per person in larger households, versus $21 a month for a two-person household. So that's not as big of a concern for me. I think overall, that kind of balances itself out anyways. I look at the rate increases that we're looking at over this next year. And if we delay implementation of a tiered rate, I think we're looking at residential increases of 15% of the water bill over the next, over the next nine months. And that's, that's kind of, that's a heavy shock for, for me to, to be able to approve. And so I would lean towards option, option two of going ahead and making the changes more, more immediately. I have one other comment. Councilor Hartmire Prigg mentioned slide 12 and bringing those more into balance. So I appreciate our, our ability to move towards that. And then I had one final comment here. I also appreciate the income-based map. I think that's a helpful, like, first look at that. And I think that could come more into play as we move forward with other potential changes in the future with the elevation-based rates. Because the income-based map looks like that lined up pretty closely with West, the West Hills and Cooper Mountain and some of the higher elevation, higher income areas. So I'd be interested to kind of see where that conversation goes. But I'm, I'm pretty strongly leaning towards option two right here.
I just a comment on, West Slope does have its own water district, West Slope Water District. So the city Beaverton actually has four different water service providers within its boundaries. The city Beaverton obviously supplies water to the bulk of our customers, but West Slope and Raleigh District are on our east side.
That's right, thank you.
Councilor DeGuerre?
I have a few questions. Have you guys ever seen a capital, because most of our increase is being driven by capital construction? Certainly, a percentage is every year is the cost of doing business. Have we, have we seen like a capital construction surcharge on the base rates? And the reason being is like, I still contend that if you raise the water rates, it's in 10 years, we're not going to remove that capital portion, right? So I'm like, at least from a communication standpoint, it might make sense to our customers if we, the base rate of the account fee stays the same, but like, for the next 10 years, we're going to put a $2 a month capital charge that goes away in 10 years, 10 years, right? Like, have you guys ever seen something like that?
I'll answer first if you don't mind. So actually, for the Beaverton Water Utility, the bulk of our driver is debt service. And so with our debt service obligations, we do have covenants we have to meet. So we have to have a certain level of income that comes in in order to pay that debt. And those debt obligation, obligations go out 20, 30 years. And so that's a more even installment payment that we're collecting revenue to pay. So we could certainly review a capital surcharge going forward that might come off, but then that would be a cash-financed viewpoint of our capital. but then that would be a cash-financed viewpoint of our capital program. So, at, at this point in time, with the debt that we're facing in the future, I'm, I'm not sure that that would be an option.
No, that makes, that's helpful. I just, that's, that's, a question for the, the multifamilies. When I, when we talk about an apartment building, say with 100 units, is that one bill we send them for the building? Or is that 100 bills that we send every single unit?
So multifamily complexes and apartment complexes generally will have one master meter. Sometimes, depending on the building itself, they may have as many buildings they have, each building might have a different meter, but the actual individual units share with that. And it typically is either, if it's a, like a condo or homeowners own it, then it's in a homeowners association type of arrangement. If it's an apartment building, then it would be part of that tenant's rent that they would then pay the landlord because the landlord is paying the water bill on that very large meter that, that supplies many, many units.
Yeah, that, that, because that matches my experience when I looked in those buildings. It was never incentivize consumption, right? You were just charged $25 a month or something like that. And so, so I see the need to kind of balance the things, but I also, like, I, I, I still have concerns around regulatory options to us to make sure that those people aren't, they're, they're being taken care of, right? And not seeing, being fleeced by, oh, the big bad city of Beaverton, but it's actually their landlord that's doing it, or, you know, the big building. So I just want to put that out there, but that's a conversation for a different time. And then a clarifying question. Is option three, is that an across-the-board rate in, in March, but then in October of '25, the tiered? Or are you saying across-the-board March, across-the-board October, tiered in October of '26?
Correct, yeah. So, so the option three would be across-the-board March and October in 2025. And then we would go back with FCS next spring in anticipation of October 2026 to have them re-review our consumption in the various tiers based on us bringing meter reading in-house and also the advanced meter, advanced meter infrastructure project to reexamine our consumption, to, to validate where we are right now. But because we've had some transition in our meter reading, and we continue to have transition in the technology of meters, we thought that if the council chose to delay tiered rates, we would want to then reexamine where, the tiers and kind of true that out once again next year.
Yeah, because I, I'm kind of struggling a little bit. Like, I, I hear that and I, I want to kind of support that work, but I, October '26 is a, you know, that's a year and a half away. And so I see the need for that validation, particularly because I think this is, if we communicate this effectively, this is going to change behavior in a very good way. We're trying to incent conservation, right? And I think, I think that's what we want to do, but we also need the validation. And so maybe there's, maybe there's an option for, I don't want to complicate, but it's like, if we can accelerate that, that look back period, if we can do, you know, maybe, well, I don't know, because then we would need to...
It's a natural breakpoint, actually, when we would reengage, because our sewer is based on winter water average.
I see.
And so that's what we are basing the timeline on, is once we have to run those consumption figures anyway for our sewer utility, would be a natural breakpoint for us to engage back with our consultants for the October 2026 timeline. And hence, that's where the, the timeline came from. But if it's the council desire to implement tiered rates, we can certainly go forward with that. We just put option three because of those transitions.
So I guess as a follow-up to that, then is there flexibility in the budget? Like, if we see a massive drop in revenue based on people doing what we want them to, right? To conserve, conservation and, and using less water, do we have the flexibility or the infrastructure in place or the, the reserves or whatever to kind of sustain that while we, you know, if we implement in, say, March, for this March, right? Help me feel better about that, like, because that's what I want to do?
Yes, we constantly review our water utility, yes, yes. Because of the, the EPA, the $81 million in debt that we have from the EPA, the $20 million from the state of Oregon for the North Transmission Line through the Infrastructure Finance Authority, and then all the revenue debt that we have, we constantly review our water utility. We have actually disclosure requirements we need to give to our bondholders, so we are constantly re-upending those schedules and publishing them on our, the MSRB website. Yes, so we are constantly looking at that. And if it turns out that we do have a higher revenue requirement than FCS has analyzed, then we would come back to the city council and tell you about the variance to the rate that we would need to collect if that were to occur.
Yeah, because my, you know, we've, I remember, gosh, it's been at least a year or two ago, Counselor Hartmire Prig and I were both pushing for tiered rates. And like, I, I'm kind of leaning towards jumping in just to get it done, but I also want to maintain that, you know, the fiduciary responsibility and the stability and the funds and everything. So, if you guys were telling me that, that, that you would let us know...
Yes, absolutely, absolutely.
Then, then, okay, that's helpful. Okay, no further question, thank you.
Counselor Tifna.
Thank you. Welcome back. Gotta love a good chart. And there's an additional one I kind of wish was in here, but I'll, I'll get to that in a second. So, I also am hearing there's some consensus up here about option B or C. And looking at those, a question I had to just get a little bit more clarity is, is there a cost burden to the city with implementing immediately versus waiting? Like, is there, because I know you'd mentioned it's complex, it's complicated as it relates to the multifamily and with the work that's currently going on around meter reading. Is there an added burden to staff to do it now? Or does the, the delay into 2026 kind of lighten the load for implementation of it? Has there been any exploration into that? I'm just thinking about staff resources in the year ahead of us and wanting to talk about that.
Yeah, that's, that's very kind of you to think about staff resources. We've already contacted our utility billing and software company, which is fully capable of implementing these tiered rates. It's a nationwide company, so that's not an issue. The, the one issue that I, I could see is with this meter transition, that we did have some, about 3% of our customers were concerned about that meter transition that we had this last August. And as we go forward, they, they might call more often, which is fine. We have a full-time staff. We have five people to answer the phones, and they take as much time as they need with our customer base, explaining to each customer, answering all their questions they have about consumption. We also point out to each customer where they can monitor their consumption. We do have a fairly robust online presence where a customer can log into their account and view their consumption. It would be after the fact. But with advanced metering infrastructure, we're hoping that, that that time lag between when they use the water and when they can dig into their account and see how much consumption they've used, that, that will shrink that timeline. So, right now, it's probably about a month lag, but with this new technology, that, that could accelerate. So we're very, we're, you can tell we're very excited about this new infrastructure that we're receiving. But that, that would be the one concern is just customer calls, asking about the tiered rates. And that's going to happen no matter when we implement it. We're still going to get those phone calls. The outreach has really helped. We had really good attendance with that outreach. And so we do plan to do bill stuffers. We have a whole webpage set up. It was part of your, part of your city publication. And so we will continue that, those outreach efforts with the city manager's office to make sure our customer base is well-informed of this change. And we have found that the bill stuffers go a long way. And if you have paperless billing, it's an attachment in an email. So they're about a third of a sheet of paper that we just stuff in the bill and just announce what's happening. And, and so that's how we would address it. And we anticipate that customer feedback to happen whenever we implement these rates, whether it's March or whether it's a year from now.
Okay. And then the, the other question I had was related to if we pushed. I'm looking specifically at the resources needed from water rate slide that shows, oh, it's on the screen, there you go. The one I'm looking at right here, it's late, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. So, looking at this, obviously, you talked about this, the debt service is going to result in increases that have nothing to do with the conversation today. There's projected debt service increase that we've got captured here. The question I was wondering is if we go with the across-the-board for this year, and then we implement the tiered strategy in 2026, is it possible that folks would see a drop in their bill?
Some customers would, and as the consultants pointed out, the cost of service rates come along with the tiered rates, and so other sectors of the bill payer's bills would change, like the customer class, that unit. If, can you go to one of those rate comparisons? Yeah, where it shows the commercial, commercial, oop, the commercial rates a little bit higher, the rate table?
Oh, you want to actually do the rate table?
Yeah, yeah. So you'll see here on this slide here how the usage rate varies depending on the type of customer. So the commercial class, you'll notice the unit rate is, is higher than the residential class. So that's, that's what the company meant when they said revenue neutral, is it's through this rate structure here.
Okay. Yeah, I, I just, I'm sensitive to the fact that our residents have been seeing increases in all sorts of things, and just thinking about what are we hitting them with this year? What would it look like next year? Is it kind of a wash because of the debt service steps and, and all of that? Trying to get my head wrapped around it. But knowing that we've got that for 30-ish years, I'll be approaching 80 at that time. And I'm, I'm, I kind of want to mark my calendar now to make sure I know when the future city staff and city council of 30 years from now is having that conversation, when that debt service falls off, like, are they going to lower the rates? Are they going to be looking for... Okay, well, that, that was all I had. Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you. I have a question. What defines commercial? What do you mean by commercial?
What defines commercial?
Yeah.
It's anything that's like not residential?
Right, oh, okay.
I don't know, well, like, we have apartments and multifamily, so, you know, those are lumped in, and then we have the single-family residential. So commercial, we would be...
Anything business?
Any, yes, any kind of business.
Non-residential.
Yeah, non-residential.
Any non-residential business, okay.
You can see here, we don't really, we don't have an industrial class within the city of Beaverton.
No, we don't?
Not within our water, there, not like Hillsborough, not when you compare it to the other cities.
Different class?
So if you had a factory in Beaverton, it would be commercial.
Okay.
An, an office with two lawyers would be commercial. So it's a very, it's a very diverse group.
Okay. If you, if you use more water, so we collect more rate, that's going to help pay off the debt, right? So, conserving water beats, it's actually the opposite of trying to make more collection, right?
Yes, if people use less because of the price signal.
They collect less costs, so it's going to be creating more debt or it's going to be hard to pay off the debt, right? Does Beaverton have water issue? Do we have to conserve water?
We do not. Beaverton is in a very fortunate situation.
So we don't have to conserve water? I mean, love to, but then we don't have to, right?
It's a, it's a value not necessarily driven by a shortage.
Shortage. So then it's, if, so tiered rate sounds all good to me, but when you look at how it impacts the residents, it's better to use more water because it doesn't drive up the cost. It actually, we can help the city pay the debt faster if we actually use more water as a Beaverton resident, if you follow logically, right? So then, by using the tiered rate, we are helping out residential, but it has to be compensated by higher cost for commercial, which includes any business, includes small businesses, small restaurants, including factories, right? So then...
Residential will also pay if they use more water.
Water, water, yeah. What I'm saying is if you use tiered rate and use more water, they'll pay more, right? But then commercial will pay a lot more than residential because that's how the tiered rate works. If they, restaurants use a lot more water, right? Small businesses use a lot more water, and factories use a lot more water. We have a, a new manufacturing in Beaverton who will end up using a lot more water. So those people will pay a lot more than residential to compensate for our collection for the cost, right?
So we're conflating, you want to take this? Well, I was... The, the, there's sort of two different issues. It's the cost of service analysis that tells us how much commercial should be paying as a class. It's, that's unrelated to the structure that we apply to single-family residential rates. So, if you were to, to go forward with a cost of service analysis, even if you didn't do tiered rates for residential, commercial rates would still go up because they need to pay more under the cost of service analysis, if that makes, if that makes sense. You could choose to apply cost of service and do a uniform rate to single-family residential instead of the tiered rates. And under cost of service, those commercial rates would still, would still go up. I, I, I also, getting back to something you said earlier, one of the unfortunate truths that we've run into over many, many years, decades of doing these, is you might see a conservation response for a year or two, and then behavior tends to go back to what it was. And so it's as much about aligning the rate, the price signal, and the reward for those customers who do use less water as it is about actually driving total usage down.
Right. So that's why I, I had a hesitation with tiered rate, not that I'm not a... Because it drives up the cost for commercial usage for the business operators. And I already have feedback from some manufacturers, not here, but Hillsborough, that they came in because water was readily available in Oregon, except the fact that cost of water is too high. So it's, it's cheaper to operate a factory in Arizona and Texas because it's cheaper water. So, you, we have a lot more water here, but then we have a higher cost to operate a business. So in a business perspective, let's say who owns a teriyaki place, right? They're already having a hard time operating, especially downtown area, cost is going up. So then if you increase the water, it's disincentivizing people to operate a business because their cost is going up. It's helping out the residential, but when you come back to it, where we know that within two years, they're going to go back to normal usage, right? Because they get used to paying for it. So then, I, I'm just worrying about that we might be hurting business side of it. So, that's my concern. I'd like to revisit that to make me comfortable to vote for tiered rate. But tiered rate sounds all good, but if it doesn't really incentivize people to conserve water, and Beaverton really do not need to conserve water, it's actually, it's better for us to use more water for, to stabilize our income base. So that is my understanding. Maybe I'm totally off on, on another universe, but, but that's, I want to share that. So I want to talk more in the future about how can we make this work so that it doesn't really impact the business side of it, or commercial side of it. So. Anybody have any other? Actually, oh, yeah, Hartmire Prig, please, counselor.
Thank you. And Counselor Kimmy, thank you for sharing that. I, I think it's just rich discussion for us all to continue to talk about these things because I know we all take the rate-setting part of our role, like, very seriously. And that's where this tiered rate conversation came from. While conservation is a potential benefit or side effect, I do think that when we did come up with the ask around this and the maybe original, or, you know, kind of starting guidance that we came from, was the goal was to keep rates affordable, not so much to push conservation of water, but to keep rates affordable. So I think that tonight is not our decision night, right? It's giving that feedback. So, because, like, I would like to see us more, you know, everyone fits into that kind of cost of service range. While I appreciate, Counselor Kimmy, there is a, there is an impact here, right? We said that commercial rates go up, but that's also, it's in response to the cost recovery, right? Like, we, we're not trying to make money on our water rates. We're trying to cover our costs. We're trying to make sure that we can pay for the debt service of this capital infrastructure investment that we've chosen. So, yeah, I guess, just, just a little bit of a response as, as I was listening to your comments and kind of sharing more about, you know, at least my, my motivation in, in seeking tiered rates is, is really tied to making sure that there's affordable rates, especially for those folks who are not using a significant amount of water, making sure that, like, they have that life-sustaining water that's important for them and that they're not going to continue to be having to make a hard decision. and that they're not going to continue to be having to make a hard decision about, can I pay my water bill this month or, or something else? So, especially, you know, I think one of the discussions we've had over time around this is there's that, kind of that base rate that goes in. And then, there's the variable part that aside of consumption and whatnot. And that both of those components are important to us, keeping these water rates affordable. I think I am, I am concerned about, you know, the double increase this year, but it's, it's just kind of the consequence of, of us not doing it in October. So, I think it's going to be hard. I don't know that it makes it any easier on our, on our water users to go between two or three. But, you know, I, I guess I'm not, I'm just not really sure yet where I'm leaning towards. But, yeah, that's all I had.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much for the presentation.
Yeah, so, is there a consensus from the city council? Should we bring back the tiered, option two? It seems like I heard the most from option two for the tiered. Very, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda is Social Services Funding Committee. We begin the work session with presentation by Community Service and Homelessness Program Manager. All right.
Down is our recorder, Mike Flanagan. Next slide, please. The purpose for tonight's presentation is twofold. We want to provide an update to the city council on the social service funding committee's funding priorities, requirements, and application timeline. And then, we would just like to gain some feedback and direction from the city council on the funding priorities, requirements, and application timeline. Next slide. The funding priorities currently are homelessness and housing, or housing and security, affordable after-school and educational programs, healthcare and affordable access, including behavioral health, hunger or food insecurity, immigrant and refugee resources.
On the eligibility for SSFC grants includes the following. Applicants must be a nonprofit organization that addresses one of the identified city priorities referenced in the previous slide for fiscal year 2024 to 2025. Only one grant application per year will be considered for any one organization. An organization will only be considered if all previously awarded grants complied with grant procedures, including timely filing of progress reports. Grants must be used for services provided directly to Beaverton residents. Proposed grant funding will not be used for capital projects. Applicants are not receiving City of Beaverton CDBG funding for the 2024 to 2025 fiscal year. And the application request must be between $10,000 to $25,000. Next slide.
Our proposed application timeline for this fiscal year would be that the applications would be open as of February 3rd with a closure of March 14th. Then, our Social Services Funding Committee would meet as needed during February and June to include deliberations and consensus building. And we would also have our own time to review the many applications. We would then present the recommendations to the city council in June. And assuming all is approved, funds would be awarded in July 2025.
And next slide. And so, at this point, we can take some feedback, some direction, or if you have any questions, we'll try to answer your questions. If we can't answer your questions, we'll take them down and get back to you as soon as possible.
All right. Counselor Hassan.
Yes, thank you for coming here and presenting to us. I really appreciate hearing from you all. I just, probably some of my feedback is going to be, I know that you've got your core five, one, two, three, four, five priorities. I'm reflecting on, you know, what we're seeing happen this year with sort of the federal government. And I just ask that we really put an emphasis on two communities that I think will be particularly impacted. And that's immigrant refugee community and then the LGBTQ community. I'm not saying that they need to be priority over everything else, but I cannot imagine what, well, I can because I belong to one of those communities. But I cannot imagine what, what folks who are feeling, are going through right now. And so, I would just ask that we really try to, like, dial in to finding those kinds of groups. I'm not saying other classes aren't important. I just, on the cusp of a lot of things, feel like those are the two areas I'd like to see us focus on. I think the Diversity Advisory Board has some pretty active members that serve different parts of immigrant communities. That would be smart to leverage. And I'm sure that you all have expertise in finding folks in the LGBTQ plus community. So, I really appreciate this work, but it is really scary right now for a lot of folks. And I hope that we can make sure that this funding helps specifically the communities right now that might not feel like they can go outside the door or like that they're safe in this community. So, I know that's really heavy. Thank you, though, for listening.
Counselor, Dugger, please.
John's okay. I, I actually completely agree with Counselor Hassan. I'll, I'll second that. You know, I, I think that's going to be a theme over the next couple of years is, is as the federal government recedes, local government's going to have to step up. So, any areas we can help those particular groups, I think, would be helpful. Look out and I see Mark in the audience. My, my, my second ask here, I'm fortunate enough to, to sit on the board of the Oregon Startup Center as the liaison. And we also recently launching the nonprofit incubator, right? It's an important part of this, this community and this work. And one of the things we've talked about on the board side is if there's organizations that maybe don't get selected because of their ability to scale or their, or their ability to serve people, I really hope you guys think, you know, about connecting them to Mark and to the nonprofit incubator so that they can be more complete applications or, or, you know, stronger applications in future years. That would be my other ask is let's think about this, not just from a funding cycle of one year, but like, you know, if they're doing good work, they just need a little help. Let's connect them with our other resources to help. And then, maybe we'll see them back in the, the next year. So, but thank you very much for what you do. It's very important.
Counselor Hartma Prig.
Thank you. I will echo what Counselors Sussin and Dugger said. These, these five areas are so important. And I believe it was the Social Services Funding Committee that had added, you know, came with these recommendations. And they fit our values and our community really needs us. So, thank you for your time in this. And I would emphasize the same, maybe special attention or just looking out for, right? Looking out for, too. I liked how you said that, Counselor Hassan. So, that's my feedback.
Counselor Teeter.
Okay, I'll just start echoing what's been shared so far. I was looking at this and, I mean, they're all really good, they're all really good priorities. I'm also trying to come into this and think our biggest priority for the city this coming year is, is fiscal recovery and trying to ground everything we do as, as a city with what us as a city government should be most responsible for. And I think we've got a, a role, or at least a small role, we can play in all of these. But I'm not even sure where I am standing on this, so I'd love y'all's input, too. But the healthcare bullet was kind of standing out, like, is this normal for a city government to be involved in healthcare, social, social services? Or can you all share kind of the, the benefits you all have seen from past applicants or the priority that you all see as a committee here? Just teach me a little bit from y'all's perspective. That would be helpful.
Take that one. So, depending on which organization, so we have multiple size organizations that will apply. A lot of times, the things that are there, that are being applied for from a larger healthcare organization is going to focus more on how you coordinate care for community members. So, if you've an individual with behavioral and mental health issues, how do you make sure that you have wraparound services? So, there'll be specific programs that will apply within that, that organization. Then, there are also smaller organizations that will apply that have more specialization on, again, coordinating the care. So, it's not, it's not solving necessarily the, the actual healthcare problem that might be experienced, but how can you mitigate some of those factors for different organizations or for different people within the community?
Okay, that's great. Do any of you also have other comments to add to that? I like that response a lot. That's helpful. Okay, that, yeah, that's helpful. Do we know how these will be prioritized against each other? Or is there a certain bucket of funding that's associated with each category? Or is it just the best applicants will be the ones that get funding? And it just kind of depends on where, where that falls?
Really, it depends on who, who the applicants are coming from. Going back to Councilman Dugger's comment regarding the looping in of the incubator, that is something that we've done in the past where if there's an organization that we just feel like this is a really great idea, but they don't have the, I don't want to say the sophistication, but they don't have that skill set or that muscle developed yet to, to really be effective, or at least we don't think they do. That's when we'll, we'll refer those folks. But generally, it's, it really is just what we see as far as the grants coming in. We do have a, a prioritization within the group that we want to focus on Beaverton-focused, like, something that's grassroots within Beaverton. So, unfortunately, that means that there are larger organizations that might have a really good impact or a really positive impact on the community. But we're not going to necessarily say, yeah, of course. Where that becomes a little bit more difficult is around, say, the food bank, which is large and massively budgeted, but at the same time, so is the demand for the, the resourcing. So, that's another thing that we take into consideration when we're debating.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I appreciate the Beaverton focus, too. I think it can be a lot harder for these smaller organizations to get the funding that they need. And I think sometimes we might be the only option for them. So, I appreciate the work that you all do. I can support these. I would just love to see LGBTQIA added in here specifically somehow. I'm not sure which category it might fall in, but I just, I want to make sure that doesn't slip through the cracks. But thank you for y'all's, y'all's time.
Counselor Tifno.
Agreed with what my fellow counselors had to say tonight. And also recognize that this is an annual budget and we're looking at the coming year. And we've got a fairly short window before we open up the grant application process. So, I understand time is of the essence. Seems like adding in that language is pretty, you know, minimal lift. But also that we are going to learn a lot over the next year on any emerging areas of need that will probably be taken into consideration when you look at this again. So, thank you for your work on this and, and for bringing it to us tonight. Looking forward to seeing the proposed changes made and seeing the money go out into our community.
Thank you. Um, I, I, my feedback is since yesterday, oh, yeah. We have huge, so some things that's announced that we have to deal with. LGBTQIA community definitely need more attention and help. And also immigrant refugee communities this year and coming year. Because that's what the brunt of the changes will be throughout those communities. The, the problem is we have to identify exactly what the needs are. And we have to identify small organizations who deal specific with those communities. So, I'd like to see those, those organizations or nonprofits get identified and maybe helped to get funding if, if possible. And also seniors, we can lump them together in healthcare whatsoever, but there are so many different ethnic groups with senior issues that deals with them. But they never get the light of the day because those are just taken care of within the community. And hopefully, we can work with those senior citizens. And also, specific youth programs with different cultures that you can fund for them to gather, a safe space for them. So, I'd love to see if we, if we can work with culturally specific organizations who, who actually works, provides social services to them. Because homeless and everything is big items, and we've been always working on it. It's always needs a help, but, but then I don't want to leave the smaller organizations out either. So, and try to get the word out that this is open. You can use the tab or the people that we have, get the word out that social services funding application will be opened. And another thing that I might comment is that hopefully, the application itself is not too complicated. I mean, yes, you have to do certain aspects of it, certain planning, but then it's not to the point where somebody takes in, you know, ten different pages, somebody brings in two. That's not, that needs are greater. It's just you have to, I have, I, I hope you can discern that what can, what they can provide will be a little bit different. So, I know you guys do, do a wonderful job. And this is the opportunity for the city to actually give us some money and help out. We kind of have to cut down all other funding. But this is something that I love for our, our community to use. Thank you. Anybody else?
Me, sorry. I just want to elevate what Council President Kimmy said. Ease of application is really important, just so you, I'm sure it is. I just, for the amount of money we're giving, I just want to make it as easy as possible. And then, I think staff traditionally sends this out. But if we could make sure it gets sent out to the council, we can share it to some of our organization friends as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. All right. Okay, the final item on the agenda is council new business. Does anyone have anything they wish to share? No one? I have one. The, you know, our fellow counselor Hassan has been getting some nasty emails. I just have to get the word out there. She's always looking over her shoulders. So, we just want to tell you we got your back.
Second that.
Second.
Yeah, I'll third that. That's ridiculous.
Yes.
Yeah, so, so don't worry. Okay, that's all I have. Nothing else? All right, that concludes our meeting for tonight. Meetings adjourned.